September 30th, 2013. The Wauwatosa School Board will, had already convened into executive session. And now we are continuing with our regular meeting with a silent reflection. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fee.
Here.
Mr. Gerose.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Excused. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this meeting. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'd like to move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action?
Yes, I'd like to remove the September 10th in-service minutes for a separate action.
Okay, September action, Septem- um, alright. So seeing that, we will then discuss and have action on the September 10th minutes. Do I have a motion to continue to re, uh, excuse me, approve the remaining consent agenda?
So.
Mrs. Randall, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Croner, second? Okay. Is there any Board comment on the consent agenda? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Gerose.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Then we will now take a discussion on the September 10th minutes. Mr. Croner, would you like to start?
Yes, I would, thank you. I was reviewing my notes from the in-service meeting, which was, I kept, I wrote everything down that we wrote on our write board. And there was one item on there that I thought was important that didn't get included in our minutes. And I would simply ask for unanimous consent, which is what we would sometimes call a friendly amendment, just to add the phrase, "Every major initiative shall have a follow-up review." And I think under that unanimous consent rules, unless someone objects, that would simply be added to the agenda.
What, what would the Board discussion?
I don't have the minutes.
We did discuss that, I think, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever, that's fine.
Where within the minutes are we adding this?
Right, so we, we need to decide that.
It'd be the seventh bullet point.
Okay. Ms. Galante, did you want to summarize that for us?
The seventh bullet point where you are adding, "Every major initiative shall have a follow-up review."
Yes, thank you.
And then I would, I would need to have a motion to make that change?
So moved. This is a motion to approve as amended.
As amended, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gerose. And we will also need to have a roll call.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Gerose.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Thank you. Word to action items, human resources, Mrs. Fee, please.
Number one, it is recommended that the School Board approve a 2% increase in wages for teachers as outlined in the 2013-2014 agreement with the Wauwatosa Education Association at a cost of $575,974. And it is further recommended that the School Board approve salary adjustments for certain professional staff members in the amount of $75,217. This adjustment will be provided to teachers who were hired onto a salary placement on the 2009-2011 salary schedule in order to bring their current salary in line with the 2013-2014 adjusted salary matrix. And I so move.
Second? And item two?
I read both.
Item two, okay. Is there any administration or Board comment on human resources?
Sure, I just wanted to briefly talk about what the two different motions mean. With the changes since Act 10, the authority of the District to bargain and the Union to bargain, wage increases are limited to CPI, 2.07 is this year's, on base wages. And so what you see before us is, the first part of that motion is, what was the product of bargaining between the Wauwatosa Education Association and the School Board, which is a 2% wage increase? And if you look at the underlying motion, that would be 2% on residual and base wages, which are products of WERC rulings on how to cost contracts. The second part of this is an adjustment since automatic steps really are no longer within what's feasible in terms of funding. There's some movement here to adjust people whose salary would have been on an old salary schedule and bringing them up to this new current salary matrix that you're providing. It's something that's done outside of bargaining, basically an act of the Board to adjust teacher compensation.
Thank you. Is there any Board discussion? Seeing none, is there any community comment? Would you please come to the microphone? And state your name and address for us, please?
Hi, Meg Lee, 2029 North 81st Street. Just a question on the salary adjustment is for the, um, the market adjustments, is that, how many teachers does that affect? I guess that's my question.
That adjustment affects 60.4 FTE worth, so it's probably a little over 60 because it's, some of them are part-time.
Over 60, okay, that's it. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any further community comment? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Gerose.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Thank you. So our report section for this evening, we'll start with student learning and the grading transformation update, Ms. Ehrenberger, Dr. Erdl.
Ms. Ehrenberger is gonna take it from here.
Wonderful, thank you.
We have a couple. Good evening. I have with me to present Clint Krahowski, who is the Associate Principal at West High School, and Dave Dentinger, the Secondary Supervisor of Education. So this evening, we're going to give some information on our Grading for Learning Initiative. The initiative, the title of the initiative was chosen by our grading committee. So as I try to give you an outline of, a description of a Grading for Learning Initiative, you'll have a greater understanding of what we mean when we're saying this. Okay, so we'll go on here and hopefully it'll... First of all, there are some terminology that we use a lot when talking about Grading for Learning. One of them is standards. So when we're speaking about standards here in the Wauwatosa School District, we're talking about national and state documents that are used to inform what we will, what we think is essential to teach at the local level. So these would be things like the Common Core, the Next Generation of Science standards, math documents, but those are things that come from external sources at state and national levels. And then what we do is we use those documents to make decisions at the local level about what we think is essential to teach. And what, when we make those decisions and our teachers are the primary stakeholders in that decision-making, we call those our benchmarks. So when you hear us talking tonight, some of this terminology may come up and we'll try to help to continue to clarify it for you. But the benchmarks are what we have decided are the skills and concepts that are agreed upon in Wauwatosa, what a student should learn at a grade level or in a course. So Grading for Learning is a, is the name that we borrowed from Ken O'Connor, who's an international consultant in standards-based grading, it's what he calls it. And we decided that that was a descriptor in Wauwatosa that we felt was most appropriate for us. But it can also be known as standards-based grading. We had Dr. Tom Guske, another consultant, working with us beginning in 2011, and this is what he called it. So when we're talking about standards-based grading, what we're really saying in Wauwatosa is that we're grading based on those benchmarks that we said were really important for our students to learn. So this is when we decide that when we're assessing and grading, we're looking at our benchmarks and saying that those things are so important for our students to know, that we want to ensure that we have accountability built into our system in measuring whether or not they know, they're proficient in those benchmarks. So one of the paradigm shifts is kind of in how we think about what we actually look at as to what goes into a grade. And this initiative is a whole lot more about teaching and learning than it is about grades. It's just that, it has a lot to do with what's in a teacher's gradebook. So traditionally, you might see quizzes, tests, projects, and homework, and that's what we would say a grade is based on. And so if a student was wondering how they might improve, it might be you can do your homework, or you might study more for your tests. And what standards-based grading or Grading for Learning is about is saying, we really want to measure where you're at in relation, in regard to the established benchmarks. So things like in a science classroom, it could be constructing a scientific model. So instead of, so when a student asks the question, "How can I improve?", the teacher can give them more information about what specifically it is that they may need to work on. So instead of saying, you know, "Do your homework," or "You might study more for tests," it could be, "You need to improve your understanding of problem-solving with scientific equations," or "You need to work on constructing scientific models." So that we're giving meaningful feedback to students about what it is that we expect them to know and do. So some, another description is that instead of saying that we're just on content and what we teach, that we're really looking at the application of concepts and skills and what students are learning. So it's a paradigm shift in how we look at what students are learning and other opportunities of whether or not they've mastered that learning. So why is it important? Traditional grading practices can be misleading, and by that I mean that we might assume that the grading practices we currently use are grading practices that many of us may have had when we went to school, and that because they're mathematically calculated and they're added up and they're averaged, that somehow because they're mathematical and that they're precise, that that makes them accurate or fair. And in reality, we know from the grading research that percentage scales, in fact, have a lot of inherent problems that can be punitive to students. One of them being that when you give percentages, it's not an equal interval scale. So there's a lot more ability to punish a student at the failing end when using a percentage scale. Also, traditional grades have tended to combine academic achievement and academic behaviors. So sometimes whether or not students do their homework is included in a grade, which is supposed to reflect what they really know and can do, versus whether or not they have academic behaviors that contribute to that learning. We think both are important. So they're, these things are both important, it's just that we think that an achievement grade should reflect what students can know and do in relation to our benchmarks, and that academic behavior should also be reported, but separately, so that we can be clear about what it is the student maybe is excelling in or needing support in. The other thing about traditional grading is, it's not always explicit. That kind of goes back to what I was just saying, that traditional grades really don't tell us much about what a student really is learning, or whether, what they're really mastering. The other thing that makes Grading for Learning important to us is that it isn't aligned, it's aligned to Common Core, Smarter Balance, where we know that students are being asked to do more than just recall and reproduce content. Students are being asked to apply content, evaluate content, synthesize content, create content. So when, when they have to do, those are higher critical thinking and higher learning skills. So we know that with Grading for Learning, we require students to do that kind of thinking instead of just recalling and reproducing the content. They have to do something with the content. So the content is still very valuable to us, it's just that the driver is what they're gonna do with it versus the content leading out. The other part is that we can really report out to colleges and to future employers what students really can know and do, instead of just a grade. It's like, what are the things that they've really mastered? So you may have passed Algebra II, but did you have mastery of Algebra II concepts? And there's a difference. You might have a C in Algebra II, but you may not have mastery. So we want to ensure that mastery has taken place, so that you are well-prepared to take your ACT test, to go work at Rockwell Collins at a job, and that we can guarantee that those are skills that you've mastered. And the other thing that is important to us is that we focus on what students have learned or what students have mastered, rather than on just what was taught. In the past, we might have taught something and then assessed it, and then moved on. In this kind of model, it is not, we may have taught it, but we may need to reteach it, we may need to work on relearning so that students have opportunities to master. There is a lot of research, we have posted some of that research on our website, and we'll be posting more, but there's a lot of research about the impact that standards-based grading can have on student achievement. So Hattie is, did a meta-analysis of many different initiatives across education and their effectiveness on student achievement. And what he found is that evidence-based grading, also known as standards-based grading, has a very large, one, almost one and a half standard deviation effect on student achievement. And to give you some perspective, if it was a .8 effect, that would be a very large effect, so one and a half is extremely significant, that it can improve student achievement. I want to clarify that this would be if we were implementing standards-based grading with the highest of fidelity. And we are in some of the initial stages of being able to do this. So, but the ultimately, if we were doing that, that there's evidence that shows that it can have a large impact on how students learn and what they learn. And a meta-analysis is when you study many of the research studies that are out there, you look at the compilation and you look for common patterns. So it's looking at like a plethora of research done on grading to be able to draw that conclusion. So, so far, what we've done is, I was here last year talking about four initiatives that we implemented. Prior to that, Dr. Guske was here on opening day for us. He's, as I mentioned before, an international grading consultant. We also have a grading committee that was started with teachers this past year, and I know many of them are in the audience tonight, and I thank them for coming and for all the work that they have put into the committee. And we also, the grading committee created a teacher handbook, so that we could do a better job of having consistent understanding of the initiatives that we implemented last year. And then this year, we're looking at, the grading committee is continuing, we're continuing with the four initiatives that we talked about last year. And then we also have introduced two pilots that came out of our study. And we're also introducing some other venues for us to be able to provide staff development for teachers, administrators, parents, and students on how we can better understand what exactly Grading for Learning means for each of those stakeholders. So Clint is here because he's an enthusiastic guy and wants to talk about the four initiatives that we began implementing last year and that we're continuing with this year.
So the first, the first initiative is multiple opportunities. And, oh, okay, and really what multiple opportunities are about is, it's not about how fast you learn something, it's that you learn it. It's about proving proficiency on assessments and not necessarily on the first try. There'll be a period of teaching and learning, and then assessment. And then if the student has not learned it to the, you know, if the student has not mastered the benchmarks, then there'll be another period of reteaching and relearning, and then a reassessment. And that process could go on as long as the student is putting forth the effort and the teacher is, is working with the student to, to help that student out. It could go on over the course of the whole quarter, technically. Why would we want to do that? Well, I think we all know that people learn different ways. There's kinesthetic learners, there's musical learners, there's visual learners, and people learn at different rates. Not everybody learns at the same speed. So it's really, it goes along with that whole paradigm shift that Beth talked about earlier of moving it away from teaching to learning, okay? Just because the teacher taught something doesn't necessarily mean that it was learned. So we keep going. The next is reducing the negative impact of zeros as well as low scores. And really what this is saying is that at the secondary level in Wauwatosa, zeros are no longer acceptable. In the gradebook, what will be reflected to students and parents will be an M or an I, not a zero. And the main point really is that that MRI won't be averaged into the grade where the zero used to be. It puts an onus of responsibility back onto the students and teachers to get the work done by, by the end of the grading period and improve that MRI and get a score in there that can be averaged into the grade. Why would we want to do this? Well, zeros don't reflect student learning at all. And research also shows that learners actually withdraw from learning, and a lot of times these are, you know, some of our more, some of our students who struggle, and they actually dig themselves a bigger hole that's harder to climb out of by the end of the quarter when they do withdraw from the learning process. Also, zeros can be excessively punitive on a percentage-based scale. And I actually have a little visual aid, if you would help me, to show that, how zeros can negatively affect a grade excessively. If I can get it unrolled here. So what I have here, when we get it unrolled, is that you'll see a picture of two students, both of whom are C-plus students with a traditional scale, 80% exactly. And you can see Student A on the left has, you know, eight 100s and two zeros, and Student B has this assortment of scores ranging between a 90 and a 60. And what we're saying is that the way things have always been done, this is the same student. That's, that student is, it's, I mean, to me, that doesn't look like the same student. It seems like Student A actually is learning a lot more, but for some re, probably didn't do a project at home, or didn't do some homework assignment that was counted as an assessment. In reality, it could have just been he forgot it, or just didn't see the value in it. Okay? The third initiative, or the third phase of the initiative is homework. And really, I think we would like to get to a direction where homework, what I really like to call is practice work, wouldn't count for anything unless it's truly, unless it truly reflects, reflects the learning of the student. The homework, the way the homework has always been used, it does not necessarily assess learning. A lot of times homework has been graded just for completion. And, well, I guess kind of in this transitional phase, when we moved to Grading for Learning, we've agreed to have it count for 10%, and hopefully that'll give students a little extra motivation to complete it.
And I would just like to interject here, that homework is still really important to us because it's practice.
Correct.
And what we're saying is that we don't want to punish students for practicing. We want them to have opportunities to make mistakes. We want them to be able to take risks. Both our high flyers and our average students and our struggling students to be able to take risks with material and not maybe have it right the first time and be able to get feedback and learn from those mistakes. So it's really important to note that homework's still important, it's just that it's practice, it's not like a summative assessment where we would grade it after they just try something one time. Instead, you practice it, and it's going to show up for you in other ways if you don't do your homework, because clearly the things that homework is preparing you for are gonna show up on a summative assessment at a later time, and if you aren't doing your practice, you know, you, it will turn up for you as you are assessed.
And the last phase of the initiative is no extra credit. Quite frankly, extra credit has been used and abused by both teachers and students historically. A lot of times, the extra credit has been given out for things like attending a football game, or bringing a box of Kleenex in, and there's, it has absolutely nothing, I shouldn't say always, but usually has nothing to do with student learning or the mastery of the benchmarks that we talked about earlier. So with multiple opportunities, we feel that the, there is really no need for extra credit anyway, because a student has extra chances to authentically prove that they have learned the material and mastered the benchmarks. So, that's that.
Thanks, Clint. So this year, teachers have the choice of continuing on with those four initiatives and learning more about them, solidifying them, help teach their students, work with their parents on what those four things mean for our students and their learning. So nothing, nothing could change for you if you, from last year. Or we offered a couple pilot programs to teachers, because just as we have students at different readiness levels, we have teachers that are at different readiness levels. Some teachers are very schooled in standards-based grading because they come from districts where they've been doing it, and then they come to Wauwatosa and they're not able to implement. So we definitely have teachers in different places, and we have some teachers that are still trying to grasp exactly all the implications of the four initiatives we just talked about. So you can stay with the current initiative, you can, we, the Teaching Grading Handbook is meant to help teachers to know and have more clarity about what those four initiatives mean. They can spend time looking at bench, the benchmarks that have been developed and understanding what mastery of those benchmarks mean. Or if they want to move over into a pilot, there's a pilot that uses an equal, a semi-equal interval scale, and it's like a transitional scale that can work for us, but it's not the ideal equal interval scale. Or a pilot on using citizenship grades that are both available to teachers to choose from. So the first one talks about using, the traditional scale is the 93 to 100, you know, you know, 67, 67 to 79, you know, what's a C plus? Those are the percentages. The pilot scale that's developed, the reason it's not, it's a semi-equal interval scale is it's not quite the perfect one. But what this one does for us is it provides some correlation to the percentage scale, so that it gives, makes it easier for some parents and students to understand that, you know, there's, there's some aliveness for them to be able to use the two scales. So it was developed as part of one of our committees on, one of our subcommittees on the grading team. So this is, the pilot scale is, is a 4.3.2. and 1.0 scale, but it does have like the intervals so that we could still have our A minuses and B pluses and things like that. So some teachers are piloting this scale. We have 53 teachers doing that. We have 21 teachers at East, and eight at Longfellow, 16 at West, and eight at Whitman. We have a total of 169 classes that are participating in the pilot. The other pilot is the citizenship pilot. This is a rubric that was developed by another subcommittee that, from the grading committee, and it's looking to measure respect, responsibility, engagement, things like participation, and whether or not a student is consistently, usually, occasionally, or rarely engaging in those kinds of behaviors that we know contribute to learning and that are important to learning. So if, the citizenship pilot is, it's much more difficult for us to know how many are participating because it's a much easier, easier pilot to implement, and teachers could be doing it, and they don't necessarily have to let us know so we can make some adjustments for them in our student information system. But the important thing for parents and students to understand is that the report card, here's a, here's the report card. There's an achievement grade. Students get a grade like they've always gotten. That is not going to change. I don't foresee that ever changing, no matter what level of implementation we're at in standards-based grading, that we will always use, you know, our ABCs and Ds. That we will always use, you know, our A, Bs, and Ds. Now, those are part of where we're at. What we might, what we're ultimately aiming to do is to get to a four-point-oh scale that is a truly equal interval scale that informs that grade. We are going to put absences and tardies on the report card so that, so that parents can see by class when a student might be missing a class or tardy to a class. If a teacher's participating in the citizenship grade, you'll see that there's a citizenship heading there. And that's where a teacher could put a four, three, two, or one to give information about their student's academic behaviors. I know that we have some teachers, I know we have a teacher in the audience that their team has decided to, on a weekly basis, have students do some self-reflection on the citizenship rubric that they've designed and is, are informing parents much more regularly than just at report card time on students' academic behavior. And how having the students do that reflection and comparing it with the teacher's assessment. So the report card stays the same. The citizenship grade does not go on a transcript. It only goes on the report card. Transcripts are exactly the way that they've always been in the past. They report the grades and the credits. That does not change. This is really a paradigm shift in how we teach and how students learn, more than it has anything to do with grading. The only thing that has some degree of difference for the grading is that we would be using an equal interval scale instead of a percentage scale, which mathematically has greater bearing for our students than, than the percentages. So this is just an estimate. All West teachers are participating in the citizenship pilot. There could be many more teachers at East and Longfellow and at Whitman. We just, it was hard to gather that data because we had not asked teachers to tell us if they were participating or not at this time. We are trying to, I should say, not trying, we are working on communication for our teachers, parents, and students. We had a parent letter that was designed for our buildings to be able to use in communicating with parents. That's, that tried to simplify the things that we're talking about tonight. Buildings are having open house presentations and/or other presentations at conference times. We are honoring teacher readiness. We were really clear with teachers that wanted to participate in the pilot that they needed to feel that they could articulate and communicate around the use of the pilot grading scale in order to participate. And that we would provide support for that, but that we needed them to have a readiness to be able to do that. We've had lots of individual conversations with administrators, teachers, and parents around, you know, what this means on an individual basis. We encourage any parents or students that have questions to be sure to contact their teacher, their principal, and the student learning department if they would like greater explanation about the implications of grading for learning. We are also, we have a website. We're under Parents on the website. We have posted some articles. We are in the process of upgrading that so that it'll be more user-friendly, so that parents can go in and look by topic. They can look under multiple opportunities, no zeros, and be able to read some of the literature regarding those initiatives. The grading committee has a pretty involved membership. These are people that get paid nothing extra. They come to this room almost last spring, almost on a monthly, bimonthly basis to meet, to talk about grading for learning. They have already met this year and will be continuing those meetings. So as you can see, we have several teachers, administration, participation. And I want to thank all those people that are serving on this committee and that continue to do so. And I, I know it may, I don't want to put anybody on the spot from that committee to talk tonight, but certainly if we have questions, they are experts as much as anyone in being able to speak to us about these kinds of initiatives. In the future, we're going to committee, we're going to continue with our staff development in our grading committee. We're going to use our building leadership teams to be able to pay forward some of the education on the grading for learning initiative. We're going to evaluate our pilot programs. Back in, at our next grading committee meeting, we're going to talk about a survey for our pilot participants to give us some feedback on what kind of support they would need and some of the things that they're learning along the way at this point, at this early point. We will look at other interval scales. We'll look at what other school districts. One of the things that is comforting to us is that there are many local school districts doing the same thing that we're doing. And we've had help from them and conversations with them about the initiatives that they're engaging in. And also, we'll be looking at like technology support that can best give our teachers the kinds of grade books and reporting that they need to give parents and students the kind of feedback on benchmarks that will make them be the kind of learners that we can be proud to take credit for as they go on to endeavors that, for their future endeavors. So that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ehrenberger. Not wanting to put anyone on the spot, I know Ms. Ehrenberger said if there were any teachers here that wanted to speak on behalf of this initiative or further clarification, you know, we could certainly do that prior to board discussion.
Maybe if we could ask questions first and then the appropriate people could answer.
Not yet? Okay.
My name's Mary Johnston and I teach at West. I do two hybrid classes. And I'm also the district teacher leader over at Whitman. And I've asked that one of my hybrid classes be put on this pilot because part of what I'm trying to do is really emphasize skills in teaching. And you can't measure skills the same way that you can measure mastery of, so I teach history, content. You need to give the kids a continuum and tell them, this is where you're going, this is where you're at. And I think it's also really important when you're measuring skills not to punish them. So I've given my kids a very elaborate scenario where I said, it's like Mount Everest. We're all climbing Mount Everest. It doesn't matter if you start, you know, you need more oxygen, you're starting down low, you know, you're, it takes you a while. But somebody else may be helicoptered in and they're, you know, higher up at a base camp. What matters is whether you reach the summit. And that's what we're going to be looking at. And so Pat Gurkey has just sent me something that will help me. I'm trying to record, do snapshots of the four or five skills that I'm really trying to emphasize in my class. And I'm recording that and I'm recording where they're at. And I told the students, if you're one and two, one and two to start off, it doesn't matter. I want to see you get two and three and then maybe to three and four. And if at the end, you're consistently a four, then that's really what your grade should be. And Pat Gurkey showed me a way that I now can work with my power school better so that I can see the continuum of grades in one skill. Because that was part of what was a little bit choppy with the way I had it set up. So I'm now able to take it, filter out, and filter for one particular skill and see their progress over the course of time. So that's why I have asked, I mean, both to understand it better, to talk to other people about it, but because I really see with the common core the need to measure how students learn skills differently. And then I also think that although it's hard for students to understand this, it's very encouraging for students. It's not, you know, it goes along with that idea of it's not punishing you because you're learning. And to be honest, I talk with parents all the time of kids who are very gifted. And one of the things they really want their children to do is what the opening day speaker said was cognitive dissonance. So that they would not have everything come easy, that they would have to slow down for a minute and think and maybe make a mistake because you really learned from that. And so this recognizes that kids are making mistakes and it also doesn't punish them. And so I think that's, I mean, I'm, you know, this is my first time doing it. I'm very hopeful that it's going to be a very powerful learning tool for my students. But I could come back in probably two months and tell you more about how it's going.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any board questions on the presentation? Mrs. Randle?
I have a couple. They're pretty basic. I'm looking at this report card, Pat Gurkey's report card, with the achievement grade of an A for English nine. What, can you identify specifically what went into that A? Was it projects? Was it tests? Was it the same kinds of things? But they were measured on the four-point scale rather than the percentage scale?
It would depend on if they're in the pilot or not.
Okay.
So right now, in this transition time, for the majority of our students, that's part of, they would still be using the percentage scale and calculating grades and averaging. However, they would be paying more attention to what students are learning in their classroom and looking for opportunities to reteach and have students like reassess. So they would be using the philosophical underpinnings of grading for learning, but they wouldn't be practicing them as a high, at the higher level that a pilot would be doing. If it's a pilot A, it's, you know, it's, you can see that the two scales are correlated. It's just that they're using an equal interval scale, which allows teachers and students to have rubrics with criteria. And those rubrics are usually based on four, three, two, and one. And can, the teacher can give feedback using those rubrics and be able to measure the grade that way.
Okay.
So it depends on whether they're in the pilot or not. The vast majority of teachers at this time are not piloting the alternative scale.
But once we achieve this equal interval scale implementation entirely, then we're talking about these rubrics?
Mm-hmm. Yes. That, I mean, it's a-
Rubrics, I think, was the part I missed, so.
Yeah, I don't know that I mentioned that.
No, that's okay. So as you said, they'll still get grades on their report cards and so on, but the rubrics? And who creates those?
The rubrics are created by teams of teachers. Those would be the kind of work that they might do in either curriculum writing or professional learning community time. When they look at the benchmarks and they agree upon what a grade level, usually, you know, what do we expect at this grade level and what would that look like for a student that was performing there? What does it look like for a student that's performing above there? And what does it look like for a student approaching? So they would make those delineations and then be able to, students would be able to also see if they weren't there, like what the next step they would have to do to be able to get the three if they were at a two. So that, that criteria is defined by teachers as they work as teams.
So what does that do to tests, like chapter four test, whatever? Is that still going to happen? Is there still going to be a test, only it's going to be based on the criteria and the rubrics?
Yeah, somebody who actually could address that, Jen.
Thanks.
I'm with Science again, but I'm at East. And I was here early, sorry. No, I'm good. The tests that have come out, they're really testing the benchmarks. So we still have tests, but they're testing the benchmarks. And in Science, they're guided by the topics of Next Gen. So we're using the Next Gen Science Standards to lead us to our topics. But within those, we're testing the four benchmarks. So one test might have five or six different grades because the benchmarks would be kind of itemized and then reported out.
Okay.
So.
We had gotten some feedback about students, from parents, basically, saying students were feeling like they didn't have to do homework anymore. Can you talk about that a little bit? And parents were upset that this would encourage kids not to do their homework because they wouldn't be marked down on that. And can you talk about that a little bit?
Yep. And I'll invite anybody else to also, but yes. Those are some discussions that we've had at great length in the grading committee and with teachers. And a lot of that has to do with the connections that are made between homework and what is going to be assessed. So you have to make the homework meaningful and it has to be connected to something. If it's a random act of homework, or if it's something that a student already knows how to do, or if it's new learning that the student doesn't know how to do and it's not connected, then it's very difficult to motivate students in other ways. But when the homework's meaningful and it's connected and students can see those connections, there are lots of motivators for them to be able to complete it besides it having to be a grade and maybe-
Yeah, I can speak for West. We have continually stressed to teachers that the homework should be meaningful. And the quantity is not the most important thing. And like Beth just said, yeah, continuing to make that connection to what's being taught in the classroom and what's going to be on the test and the homework reflecting that. And not only that, I mean, it still does count for ten percent. So, I mean, it does have value to the overall grade still too.
And, and that's to imply that in the past, our homework counted for more or it counted for less? That was very inconsistent and it was left to teacher discretion. So it also implies some things that may or not have been happening before. I think the other thing that's important to emphasize as well is I think that somewhere in that communication last year, that deadlines weren't important. And deadlines are important. Teachers can have hard and fast deadlines. It's just that the learning can't end with a deadline that leaves a student with a zero. So there have to be some other ways to address that learning. But certainly, students can be, can have deadlines and should be held accountable to those deadlines. But we're not going to punish them with a grade. We have to like have some paradigm shifts in how we think about what it is we're trying to accomplish. So if we just want to disengage that student and give them a zero, we will lose them in the learning process. Or we can reengage them in that process and renegotiate what it is they are going to do if they haven't met like a hard deadline. So homework is still important. It's actually very important when it's meaningful and tied to what we're trying to do. And there are deadlines that are still really important.
I am Jean Hoffman, Associate Principal at East. Thomas Gofsky also, in, in one of his books, talks about, there should still be consequences if students aren't doing homework, but it shouldn't be punishing consequences that result in a lower grade. So at East, what we have is eighth-hour study hall. And teachers can assign students to an eighth-hour study hall if they're not getting their homework in. Students then are supposed to go to it, get their homework done, and then they'll be released from the study hall. If they don't show up, then we get the parents involved. If the, the help from the parents doesn't help, then it becomes a behavioral consequence and we get involved rather than an academic consequence. So we've got something in place to still try to motivate students without making it be tied to their grade.
Okay. And the only little bit of that that's confusing to me is, you said homework could still count for ten percent of a grade.
Right. And as-
For that to happen, it has to have its own number, right? I mean-
And as Clint said, you know, we're trying to get away from that, but I think because it is such a huge paradigm shift for students and parents and teachers, we've kind of kept that, that little ten percent. Realistically, we shouldn't have it at all. There should be nothing.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just say I'm really glad to see the communication is beefed up because I do think there's a lot of confusion, you know, just the questions we got were very, you know, opposite. One person thought this, and one person thought another. Do you think we have enough in place for parents as far as educating?
Well, I think that, I don't know anything, I don't know anything that we can't do better at. I mean, that's, it's in the spirit of, you know, there's, in the spirit of learning, we all have things to learn. And yeah, we can do better. We can still do better. Where some of that doing better is the more people that we can have that can articulate, you know, what it is and have like meaningful conversations about it, the better communicators we all are. So we, we continue to talk about it. We continue to go at it. Sometimes it's, it does take a one-on-one conversation to help. It's, it would be presumptuous to think that this isn't a complex undertaking. It's very complex. There's a lot of nuances. And just as we ask our students to learn and have discourse, we have that same kind of conversation with teachers. There's, if this was easy to implement, everybody would be doing it and we wouldn't need to have, you know, year after year, try to take a step toward it. There's, it breaks from some strong traditions that maybe have been built off of some mythical beliefs that, you know, mathematical gra, you know, just because it's math, grades are, are something, you know, very objective. When indeed, one of the things that Ken O'Connor, the person we're modeling, our program after, says is, there has always been subjectivity in grading. I can write, if I want to get my grades up, I can write an easy test. If I want my kids to, you know, I think it looks too easy, I can write a harder test. I can ask a hundred point, a hundred multiple choice questions about very specific content and make it really hard. hard. So there's a lot of things we believe about grades that have always been very subjective. And that part doesn't go away. It's just that we are going to have our teachers have better criteria of which to judge whether a student has mastery or not, instead of averaging some things out. And at the beginning of that grade, maybe while you were in the first learning phase, you didn't do well because you were learning, and then you got it. But when we average it out for you, you, you have a C because you started out not doing so well. And that, that punishes a student for, for the learning that we really want. And the real question is, have they mastered the benchmark at the end of the desired time? Not at the beginning of it or the middle of it, but by the end, did they get there? And if they did, we don't need to average that. We know they made it. Let's give them the grade that shows the mastery.
You know, and one thing, too, Mary Jo, you asked about communication. Given that this is a complex process that will take a number of years to complete, I know at West, they did an open house. Matt, you had, how many parents go through?
Several.
So at West, on one end of the spectrum, Matt was doing a presentation, PowerPoint, explaining to parents and working with those parents. So obviously, we're trying to get all the schools, the four schools, up to that level, but we do have that sort of communication that's at one end, and we're moving everybody toward that end.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was all very helpful. Thanks.
Hi, Ms. Rios.
Oh.
You nodded at me.
Yeah.
And thanks to the teachers that spoke. It's nice to see you here. Thank you for taking your time tonight to come. I, I think, I appreciate what a huge change this is. I, I think the power in it, and also the most difficult part, is probably determining what the evidence is, right, in the, in the student's performance, or what they can prove or show that they have mastered the benchmarks, hence the standards, right? And I think that is a change in instruction, almost, a change. I mean, if you've been a teacher that has taught kind of based on content for a long time, and now you have to go to a skills-based, evidence-based model, that's going to be a really hard change, and it's going to take a really long time. And I really am happy that you're giving people the time to, you know, get there at their own pace and pilot some programs before you just say, everyone's doing this. And so I'm wondering what other kinds of support is being given so that individual content groups can, can come up with this evidence to show that the students are learning? Because I think, to me, that's like the hardest, you know, if I, that would be a really hard thing to do, which would be not just a change in your assessments, but a change in your instruction, right? And so that's huge. And I think like, I appreciate that it's happening slowly because I, I think it would be very stressful to just all of a sudden have this, right?
We just had a, we just had a BLT meeting in this room a, a week or two ago, where we bring in the teachers, the teacher leaders from the different four secondary schools. And we talked about how all of these initiatives butt up against each other. So benchmarks, writing those benchmarks, constructing those, is an essential initiative. Grading is another initiative. You can't grade unless you have the benchmarks articulated and make it clear what skills you want-
Right.
-to learn. The Common Summativ Assessment is another huge initiative.
Yeah.
Encodes those benchmarks so that they can be graded. The PLCs, then, are where the teachers meet weekly to talk about what can they assess, what kinds of data are they getting. So all of these initiatives interweave. They're getting a lot of support via staff development. Do you want to talk at all about, about like the BLTs, the staff developments?
I think you're doing a great job.
Or if any, or if like any of the teachers here, I mean, has that been, I assume that's probably one of the more challenging parts of this, if anyone, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, you, Ms. Johnston, right? You said that you had the skills, right? So you were kind of already-
Well, and I've been working with social studies content for, or as like in the curriculum, the writing of it, for any number of years. And it was probably at least five years now that I went to a meeting at McKinley of all of the social studies teachers, and I said, this, this is changing. We are moving towards skill-based. We are moving away from content, this discrete content. Wasn't necessarily a welcome message with social studies educators because we do tend to be people who are very mired, and I don't know if mired is the right word, but we hear a lot of content. But it's been going on for five years, and I've been working with it and trying to educate people within my department and thinking deeply and intensely about it. And it's just picking up speed with changes in standardized testing, with the Common Core. So we've been working on it pretty intensely in social studies and thinking about it, and how do you grade, and how do you grade across the spectrum? So if research is something that you want to grade in social studies, what does good researching and source finding look, look like at sixth grade? What does it look like at eighth grade? What does it look like at 10th grade? What does it look like at 12th grade? What does it look like if you're in the stratosphere? So that we can place a kid on that. And that's actually the development of a rubric that you would then use in your class. And it would be grade-focused, but you would probably put in what's a little bit lower, so you could see where a kid was at, and what's a little bit higher, in case you have to challenge somebody and, and push them more. So it's been going on. I don't know that everybody's kind of put the entire picture together about how it will play out on a day-to-day basis in their ground, you know, in their classroom, but we've been thinking about a lot in social studies.
We also, and we also have been using a number of mediums to do that. So the PLCs, for a number of years now, we've been doing benchmarks assessment. The PLCs, staff development days we have coming up, one coming up October 25th, where the content teams will have the morning to work precisely on what they need to work on, whether that's benchmarks, Common Summativ Assessments. So we have those staff development days, we have the BLT days, which are paid forward in the schools. We have those PLC days. We've got a number of initiatives, the summer curriculum writing. So we try as much as possible to support teachers in these interweaving initiatives to make sure that they're, they have the time and the support to, to move forward.
Thank you. And then just two, two more things I had in my mind. One is like the infrastructure, like Power School, how does it accommodate the changes that you want to make, right? Like, you want to do things on a scale?
Yeah.
And from, it doesn't-
Uh, Power School actually has a whole other part that is standards-based grading, you know, where the grade books and everything would be aligned to what we would need to do for standards-based. The problem is, is that we can't have like, we can't have, we can't be on both sides of it. So until we make like a hard shift, you know, we are kind of living between two worlds, and we're trying to make like a side of Power School be as accommodating as it possibly can to these hard-working teachers that are trying to do a pilot. And I know Dave has spent considerable amount of time working with, when he mentioned Pat Gurkey earlier, she's our Power School support, on how we can set it up to make it as easy as possible for teachers. But those are challenges. Technology is a challenge, but we, you know, we are trying to take the approach that you can do standards-based grading even if we had no technology. You know, if we really believe it's a really good thing to do, you, we can do it. But of course, we, you know, it would be nice to be able to have the ability to work, you know, on both sides of that piece of technology. So we'll see next year, that's one of the things we're talking about, is next year, can we find some supportive ways to work over on the other side without causing a lot of other problems, you know, with where we're at?
And in straddling the two paradigms of numeric-based grading and then standards-based, we talk a lot about how it is a round peg in a square hole, essentially, that any numeric system contradicts standards-based. I came from a school that had a different informational system, and it was unable to accommodate the shift. Power School, for however we've had to patch it up, we have been able to create essentially an inter, equal interval scale to, to move forward in that transition to a standards-based. So I, I think Power School is actually doing pretty well.
I would also like to just say that the elementary report card and its function is a standards-based report card. At the elementary level, we have like the, the functionality of a report card that allows for standards-based reporting because they have like, they have standards on there, they'll have comprehension and, you know, fluency, and, you know, they'll have the actual standards on the report card, and then there's an overall grade. And, and for anyone that might be familiar with an elementary report card, it also has like effort separated out. It's not put in with the grade. So on the elementary report card, it's always been achievement grade, separate from academic behaviors. And then we have like that whole other section where we keep saying things about the behaviors of, of students. So at the elementary level, it's not so, it's more working on some of that consistency and some of those rubrics. Parents might also have familiarity with the writing rubrics that are used, you know, so that a writing rubric says like, you know, the four, the three, the two, the one, that's what elementary uses to assess, you know, mastery of writing at different grade levels. It looks different at first grade than it does at fifth grade. So at elementary, our challenges are still in working on some of that consistency across the district, not just in areas like writing, reading, but in math and science and social studies. Do we have equity and, you know, consistency in how we're measuring that? But the format is there. The format is actually a standards-based formatting. Whereas at the secondary level, our secondary teachers have, not all of them, but holistically, they have like a much better understanding of the actual underpinnings of what it means to standards-based grade. But they don't have the functionality because we can't just all of a sudden move over to like this completely different way of doing business without having some opportunities to see what works and what doesn't work. So I, I think we can use the elementary report card as a reference for, you know, it's not like it's a completely unfamiliar world. It's just that, you know, we're not doing either with fidelity at either level, but we have to work on different things to get us there.
Okay. Is there any other board discussion question? Mr. Kroner, please?
Thank you. Okay. I will admit, starting off, that as a parent, I've really struggled with this for the last year. So I, I went to the website and read some of the literature this weekend to try to learn more about it for this meeting. And I think I'm either going to move us forward a little bit, or I'm going to prove that a little knowledge is a dangerous thing.
Uh-oh.
So my first question is about communication. So in what I've learned, this is a, a big project, maybe even bigger than you've said it is, for the teachers that have not been trained in the system or been teaching this way for years, especially for the students who have not come up being graded this way, and especially for parents who have not, didn't go to school under this kind of a system. So I guess my question is about communication. I'm still not sure where, where we need to be to make sure that everyone really understands where we're going, why we're moving in that direction, how long it's going to take to get there. And I was just wondering on your thoughts on that. Is there something more that we can do for communication? And I'll just throw in there, I noticed when you listed the grading committee, there were no parents on the grading committee. And from some of Guskewski's writings, he says that's pretty critical, if not only for a parent to say, can you please describe that in English? You know, don't use jargon. Tell me what's really going on so I can understand what's happening with my child. So what are your comments about how we can improve just the general communication to make this work well?
Well, if, if you have, some of your suggestions, we're open to those suggestions. Sometimes it's, we've, we've talked about it a lot more. It's, 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 it's something we can do better. Clearly, we're trying. Like, I was talking to a Milwaukee Journal Sentinel reporter that called about the Milwaukee Public School District moving to standards-based grading and wanted, was talking to local districts. They didn't really take many of our quotes, but they did, Dave, they did take one of Dave's. But, um, anyway, but the thing is, is like, you know, I said to the reporter, if, you know, this is a really, this is a complex thing to communicate and to get communication out and to bring understanding to a greater community because, you know, unless it impacts you right at a moment, you know, you're maybe not as engaged or as interested, like going to read it now, you know. So I had said, anything that we can have from even our media influences to help, it will help all of the school districts trying to work on this initiative because any of those vehicles to be able to communicate what things are and get to a broader audience will help us. So, you know, whenever we have opportunities, we're trying to engage in the dialogue and to use the resource. It's a challenge. I know the administrators that are here tonight from buildings have all had parent nights, have had parent evenings. I know they're still planning to have those this year. I know they have them scheduled. Some have had them as early as open house like West, but other buildings are having them, you know, at later times in the year. It's hard sometimes when you're trying to get your own sea legs to bring other people into the conversation because it can be misunderstood as we don't know what we're doing. And, you know, it's really that we're learning some things. Could we include parents on the grading committee? Certainly. I don't know if our committee would be the venue, but we could have a parents committee where we could work on using some parent education. I know some principals have talked with their, you know, PTAs, PTOs about it. The administrative team has talked about how we can better communicate and working on a communication plan. So we're open to ideas. We're open to parents that do have, want to be educated on the topic and can help us. We, you know, we, we want, the discourse is really good. We found that even, we can't learn without some discourse. So even when we're talking among ourselves, sometimes we're like having discourse, but we get to like some kind of better place for all of us. So.
You know, I think one thing, you know, Beth's point is that there needs, there needs to be a variety of, of, of ways to do that. But one thing is, it, it really will take time because I think what we found in research is that parents learn best from their kid's teachers in time, just in time. So we can talk to teachers and do presentat, or to parents and do presentations. That's, that's not as effective as, as a parent going in to talk to my kid's teacher about the chemistry grade and what's going on. So the more we can educate our own teachers and bring them along, the more they're going to be able to communicate with the, the parents one-on-one, where I think it's really going to make a big difference. I see Frank, could you-
Yeah. Hi, Frank Clarko, Principal at West. What I will say, Phil, is that we've done a much better job this year. Last year, myself, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Galen spent a lot of time during the summer. We came up with some initiatives. We went to Beth and Phil with a plan. That was two weeks before school started. So our focus was getting teachers ready for it. We could have done a better job. This year, or all of last year then, during the school year, we spent time with this committee. We really got our legs underneath us so that at the start of this school year, when we were sending out our alert nows to our parents saying, here comes open house, please make sure to ask specific questions about the grading, our teachers were already told to get in their course-alike groups and have the same policies, you know, across the board in their, in their course syllabi. And so, and then we had that open house, three or 400 parents in there, gave them a lot of information, and we only had two questions after, after the presentation was over. And the question was, how are colleges going to take these grades? And, which is an easy answer, colleges already have their way of figuring out with their own criteria how, how they're going to accept students. So to answer your question, I think we did a tremendous job this year. Can we get better? Yes. But what Dave just hit on, parents want to hear it from those individual teachers. What does it really look like for me and, and my students? And I think that we accomplished that much, in a much better way this year with the open house.
And, and that didn't mean my question to come out negative. I, I realize how important this is. And I'm thinking, moving forward, just to always keep communication in mind and involve parents and people in community, say, did you, what's your view of this? What do you, what do you understand about this? What could we do better? Just always keep that in your mind. Because I think that's going to be one of the biggest hurdles to making this successful, is just communication with-
I don't think you were being negative. I think you were being really proactive. And the, the weird part about this is, last year, PTA meetings, twice I offered to do these presentations on it, and you get seven or eight parents because they're, whatever, everybody's busy. But I think after going through it for a year, putting it in our teachers' hands, who now can really speak more specifically, that was a key. So moving forward, I think that's what we have to keep doing.
Another comment I have is, sometimes I'm troubled because I'm not sure I understand this correctly. You talk about moving from a content-based system to a skills-based system, okay? And coming from a science background, that concerns me a little bit, but every field has content that you have to master before you can have skills-
Yep.
-in that area. And so I just want to confirm that we're doing both. I mean, and I'll just give an example of, of a chart that, it was in one of Guskewski's articles, talk about a table of specifications.
Mm-hmm.
And he lists knowledge of terms, facts, rules, and principles, and then processes and procedures. And then he goes on to say, the students also need to know how to translate that, apply it, and analyze and synthesize from it. So I assume when you're talking about moving from content to skills, we're still doing all those things.
Yeah.
We're just measuring something extra as how you're going to apply the content.
Actually, when Jackie was, when Jackie Shabasta was up here, and she said something really important, and it'd be easy to miss, but she was talking about, like, since, from a science perspective. So the next generation of science standards, Jackie said that that informed their topics, and that's really informing their content. Like, what are we going to teach? What, what is it we should be teaching? Should we teach the, you know, cellular unit? Are we teaching, I'm going to fail them terribly here. Shouldn't have even ventured into this. But those, that's where the next gen informed for them, you know, like, what are some of those, you know, content areas that we're going to teach? And then they looked at college and career readiness, which is designed by ACT, to say like, okay, what are those skills and concepts they need for readiness? And then they also looked at the literacy standards from the Common Core so that they could incorporate those. could incorporate those. And they did a cross-referencing of all of those documents to make decisions about what content will we use to teach skills and concepts and processes. We're abbreviating it by saying skills, but we're really talking about skills, concepts, processes, because that is how knowledge can be transferred. It can't be transferred trying to do recall and reproduction because our minds aren't built that way, you know, to memorize a lot of facts. And with technology today, the information that is factual is so accessible, so readily accessible, that we really need students to be able to have a context in which to use that content. So it's, the content still matters. It's just that it is, it works in relationship to the content, or to the concepts, the skills, and the processes. Similar to when we did the world language adoption, and we talked about how grammar used to kind of be at the front of world language, and in the background was the communication. And then the research showed really clearly that grammar, you know, rides in the back and the communication piece is in the front. And that's a complete switch. But it doesn't mean we don't teach grammar anymore. It's just that we don't let the grammar drive what we're going to do. We let the communication drive it, and we use the grammar in context instead of an isolated memorization or trying to like recall it when we need it. So they all still matter. I also say this, when we used to blame the teacher before us, you know, for not teaching stuff, and say like, you know, what happened to that third-grade teacher? You know, these kids came and they, they aren't ready. I thought they were there. But really, some of that blame isn't about that teacher at all. It's about what we were expecting teachers to teach. And if you're teaching a lot of content that could be recalled or reproduced, you know, and we ask students to do that the next year, well, there's, it wouldn't even, with all the brain research, we know kids aren't going to be able to do that. So we need to be able to have it in a, kind of, put it in something that they can transfer it with them to the next grade, and they can apply it to different situations. And that's really our goal. But we need content to do that. So content doesn't go away. It just doesn't drive the car.
Um, let's see. I had kind of a general question. We sometimes talk about the, what am I thinking about? The discrepancy in achievement for the different subgroups of students? This is a little bit off-topic. What is, how does this affect that measurement? Do you think that the current grading system that we have overemphasizes that different, that gap? Or is this going to give us a more accurate reflection of what the actual difference is?
Yeah. Well, when we aren't sure about what we want students to learn, and we haven't explicitly defined, you know, what it is we want them to learn, which is what the benchmarks do, then it's hard for any student, it's harder for students to miss the target. And when we're talking about content, a lot of times, when we did content teaching, it also requires you to bring background knowledge with you. And there is, most often, when we're talking about achievement gaps with special education students, you know, students of color, you know, whatever that, that gap might be, we have been reliant on that background knowledge as part of what we assess. But when we're looking at skills and concepts, it's okay to provide the background knowledge, and it's okay to see how students work with that and how they use it, rather than, did you have these experiences in your life that you can bring to this? And because you've had those experiences, some kids come to things way more ready than other kids. So in, in some ways, this like provides more equity because it levels the playing field on some of that content stuff. So instead of assessing all that content and seeing like, gee, did you have those experiences? Did you, did you know that? It, it's, it gives you that, you know? So like, here's the content. Now we're going to work with what you're going to do with it, instead of asking kids to pull that out of a place where they may not have had that kind of experience. So I think in that respect, it also holds us more accountable to make sure that students are learning the things. We're not just passing students, or we're not just averaging a grade where they maybe still didn't have understanding. So if we really want those students to close achievement gaps, we have to close the gap in what it is they, they may know, may or may not know and be able to do. So we can be more sure about remediating learning because kids have more chances to go at it.
And I think my last question is just more about, so I have a better understanding of the full scope of this project. If, if things, the pilot programs that you're expanding continue to work well, at what point do you think we'll have full implementation in the district?
I think that.
You don't have to be very specific. I'm just curious as to how long. I know it's a big project.
I think that it's, it's really hard to say because we're trying to work through the process, and we're trying to like weigh, you know, some of our learning from the process. We would like, initially, we had thought that it would be nice to be able to move to an equal interval grading scale, you know, uniformly, maybe by next year, by next fall. That may be lofty because we, we just put the pilot in place. We have 53 teachers in the pilot, but we have a whole lot of teachers that aren't in that pilot. So we have to see where those other teachers end up by the end of the year and their learning and their growth to see if we have readiness. So I think it's, like, this year, we held on, you know, we said like, we're going to stick with the four initiatives, and if that's where you need to stay this year to, to increase your learning, we may be holding another year for that too, depending on where readiness is at. So it's hard to say, and I really don't want people to feel like it's going to be pushed, you know, pushed on them, but at the same time, we want to take our learning and move forward in a way that brings along as many people as we can. So I, I think we'll have to weigh that as the year goes on.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other board question or comment? No? Seeing none? Thank you very much for your presentation. We may have some community members that have some questions or comments, so please stay close through this session, please, if you wouldn't mind. But again, you know, really the incredible work that this team has taken on, and, you know, so many of you are here this evening. It's, it's wonderful to see that. Then, could we please have community comment on this topic? And what I would like to request is, if you step forward, please say your name and address. If it is a question that we may not be able to answer for you immediately this evening, would you please make sure you pass your contact information to Ms. Galante so that we may follow up with you? The best, you know, contact number, email, whatever you, however you'd like to contact us. But, but then, could we please have community comment?
First of all, I think it's great that there's so much teacher participation tonight. That's awesome. And I think one of my daughter's teachers is, former teachers is sitting out there. And I'm, when you talk about communication, I guess I should talk to you, Beth. When you talk about communication, what would really be meaningful for me? Because I read this before I came, I sat through the presentation, and most of it's not resonating. So can you tell me what it's supposed to look like? And this is a, you know, don't have to answer this now, but for me, it would help to understand what it, what my kid's day looks like as a result of this change in philosophy. So what's a day in the life of an eighth grader as a result? You know, I don't know what other parents, what would benefit other parents, but how does it, and what, what evidence are you looking for at the end of the day? What's going to show you that, you know, there were, that you're hitting your mark? What are you looking for exactly? Can you tell me that right now? Or?
That would, that evidence would come from like the rubrics. That would be, that some teachers have and have progressed way, their readiness is way beyond even where we're at. But it has a lot to do with like the rubrics that are created. And then also, over time, as you implement those rubrics, that you gain exemplars of work that students have done, and that you can use those exemplars as a, as a way to also teach students to say, you know, this is what a three looks like. This is what a four looks like. You know, this might be what a one looks like. So it's looking at both having criteria and also having student work that exemplifies what those different evaluation points are. So that is kind of the basis of standards-based grading, is that you have that kind of evidence behind it.
And how does that impact the classroom dynamic when you have a really large class size? How does that affect you teachers? I'm curious about that. Well, how does that translate into the, you know, how do you apply it with really large class sizes?
I don't know if I need a question. Can I remember?
Well, what I'd like to do is, it, it's a little bit difficult in this setting to do a question and answer. And it kind of sounds like, from your comment, that you have a lot of questions. Would it be all right if we could, you know, take your information and, you know, have Ms. Ehrenberger or, you know, some of the other people on the committee to, you know, answer your questions?
Yes.
And then, you know, there could be more of an exchange in that format?
Yeah. And I'm sure that, you know, I'll, I'll be going to the sessions at my kids' schools as well. But, you know, I'm assuming that some of the questions I have are the questions other people have. So maybe prep people for some, prep the principals or who's ever presenting for what some of those questions might be. That would be helpful.
Yeah. And also, I just want to say that if those kind of questions can help us, those are the kinds of things we discuss at the grading committee also.
Okay.
So that, you know, we can take those forward and be able to talk about what it would look like for a parent, you know, what would that parent view be? So that's helpful to us.
Okay.
You know, even if you email us any of those questions, we'll take them. We talk about them. That's part of what helps us to facilitate where we need to go next.
Okay. And I do one more question that I think you can answer, which is, what have the other districts learned from all of this?
You mean the other districts that are implementing?
That are implementing it.
Um, I think that, like, one of the districts we work with a lot is Waukesha. And, and I know that, and we have deep respect because they've, they've helped us a lot. They worked with our teachers. They've opened their grade books up to our teachers. They've showed them what it looks like. But I think that they've had some stops and starts, and they feel that one of the biggest things that we learned from them was that you have to have the right benchmarks. If you don't have the right benchmarks, it's very difficult to do, you know, standards-based grading. So I think all school districts struggle with the communication piece and the parent communication piece and the understanding because it is a more complex paradigm shift. I know that many of the districts that are local want to work together, you know, how can we work together and to help each other? Because we're dealing with some of the same kinds of questions and things that we're trying to troubleshoot.
But what successes have they specifically seen?
Miss Lee, is it possible that we could?
Sorry.
Process some of your questions?
Sure.
And, and, you know, then get back to you with more thorough answers?
You bet.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's been very helpful.
Can I just say, if Zach, Zach, you were going to share something, and do you still want to do that?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. Zachary Shackelford from Longfellow. And just, I just wanted to address your question. A day in a life, I can't speak to eighth graders because I teach sixth-grade science, but a day in the life of a sixth grader in science class is going to look a little bit like me leading them in a discussion. And we're going to discuss, we're going to explore, and then we're going to come back. And as we come back, now my students now have a chance to operate under their own guidelines of their own understanding. And then as we move from our, my sage on the stage to their understanding, we get into this world where discourse happens, where my students are now leading the conversations, posing their own viewpoints, and coming to a better understanding of the concepts that I'm trying to present to them. And as they grow in their understanding of the concepts, the core content, vocabulary usage comes into play, everything comes into play. I assess formatively where they're at with questions, exit slips and things like that. We move on. We take a quiz. We have to take a step back and assess where we're at at that point and work through any of the kinks that, or misconceptions that any of the students may have at this point. And then we move on, and we do it again. So far this month in school, I've assessed really one benchmark. I've been looking at how my students are able to interpret data, look at information, and analyze it and use it. And as they do that, I'm hoping, my hope was, is that we don't, all didn't start at the very top because we have to go somewhere. So we're in this transition phase where I have a lot of parents that are concerned. I have a lot of students that are concerned. And I was, earlier, I, you asked about the communication aspect of everything. And I think it's a grassroots communication, the way I feel, anyway. I have to get my students to buy into what I'm trying to teach them and how they're going to learn it. From there, they're going to bring home this less than satisfactory grade to their parents. And their parents are going to say, what's going on? I, I have Janie upstairs crying, and she's never gotten an F before. And I have to say, it's okay, it's okay. It's a process. We're going to get there. And the very next week, we did this exact same thing. And guess what? Janie didn't have that, that F on her report card. She now was moving into the proficiency of grade-level expectations. Next week, this week, we're going to do the same thing, and we're going to keep on growing. And that's the focus, is the growth over time. And that's a little bit of a sixth grader's life in science. I, I'm hoping, I would think, that it's probably very similar for all, for all grades now. Good. You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other further community comment? Seeing none? Oh, one more. Oh, thank you. I looked down, and there you were. I apologize.
Okay. Kathy Barant, 2772 North 69th Street. And I just have a question or a comment, and I agree with Mr. Kroner in that communication is an essential, essential in implementing and rolling out this grading system. I believe that there are many parents, my daughter is a junior at Wauwautosa East, that have no idea that this grading scale is going to be implemented. And I would strongly suggest that you make a presentation similar to what you had this evening so that there is a better communication, a better understanding between the, the parents and the students that you could possibly make. And maybe Mrs. Kazar and Mrs. Hoffman could address that as well, and when that's going to happen. And sooner, better than later. And I would hope that, that this would be done relatively soon because I think there's a lot of parents that are going to have questions. I agree with Mrs. Lee that, my head's spinning. You are correct that, that this whole grading system is completely different than what I was raised, you know, my daughter, all the way through now being a junior in high school. And, you know, just with her AP classes and applying for college, which is right around the corner. Again, how, how that transition is going to, to take place for her in applying for colleges and, you know, making sure that we have a good understanding of when that's all being rolled out. So that, that's my, my comment on that. And so hopefully, we'll hear something soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further comment? No further comment? Not going to look down quite yet? Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Certainly, as trying to chair this portion of, of the meeting, I understand there is most likely a need to have more of a public forum, maybe, type session. I don't know what that would look like. We might have to talk about how to follow up on this from communication at, you know, at the board level. I personally found the questions being asked by the community, the responses from the staff, very, very helpful this evening. So I hope we can, we can do that. Then, moving on to the superintendent's section of reports, the County Grounds Charter School update.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Danny Goldberg here and a group of other people, other people associated with Forest Exploration Center. We've been having discussions, been re-engaged in the process, and having discussions about looking at a unique governance model for a school. The board is not being asked to vote on anything or commit to anything. The only thing that so far we've committed to, or I've committed to, is continuing the discussions and continue to look at how we can. and continue to look at how we can develop this school into something that's, that's good for students of Wauwatosa and the Wauwatosa School District. So I will introduce Danny.
And welcome to you all as you set up. And I'll ask you to introduce your team.
I will. There's a lot of us here. Some of us are going to speak to give a full view of where we're at. Others are here and I'll introduce them too, depending on the questions and where their natural expertise lies with the overall project.
Okay.
People hear me all right? Okay. So I'm Danny Goldberg. I'm the school director for the University Laboratory School. I'm here with Mary Staton, who is the Vice President of the Governance Council of the University Laboratory School. I'll let her give you her credentials as an educator because if I do, we'll be here for 20 minutes. And I want to just let her, I think she's well-known to some of the people here already. Tom Gartner is the Treasurer of the FEC and the spokesperson for the Forest Exploration Center and is the Treasurer of the University Laboratory School's Governance Council. Allison Perry is the Forest Educator for the Forest Exploration Center and the Lead Teacher for the University Laboratory School. And she'll be here to tell you a little bit about the way we modeled what we're all about this summer and the program that she helped design and implement. Joe Schmidt is the Secretary of the University Laboratory School's Governance Council and is an engineer with CG Schmidt, who has been working with us on the restoration of the Ashweiler Buildings. And Tom Lujack is an FEC Board Member and is the Vice Chancellor at UWM and he'll be talking about the UWM partnership. So that's all of us. Here we are. Our intention is to be as interactive as possible. So I just want to give you a quick update and then ask Tom to talk about the vision that the FEC has forged for this. Mary and Allison to talk about educational components. And Tom will tell you about the partnership with UWM. The key probably informational piece here, milestone is on September 13th, we submitted a full application for the University Laboratory School to the UWM Chartering Authority. We were delighted to be able to submit with that application a statement of partnership letter describing the productive and ongoing discussions with the Wauwatosa School District. And as we stated in that letter, achieving a successful partnership is crucial for the University Laboratory School. That's one of the key ways we will define the success of this endeavor. And that's why we've been coming back together after the pause. Then Tom can tell you, Tom Gartner can tell now to talk about the, the overall vision and how we are using the school to realize the vision for both the Forest Exploration Center's mission and the County Grounds as well. Tom?
Thank you, Danny.
Can I just ask real quickly, the University Lab School, is that the new
This is the name of the school.
Charter School? And FEC is a separate entity?
The Forest Exploration Center is a nonprofit organization that has commissioned the school and the Governance Council. So in the charter, it will be a signature between the Governance Council of the University Laboratory School, the Forest Exploration Center and the Chartering Authority, University of Wisconsin.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you Superintendent Erdl, members of the Board of Education, staff, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My connection to this project spans the better part of a decade. Going way back to, as I've described it to anybody willing to listen to when the barbarians were at the gate, up in arms about saving the County Grounds. I've always had a personal interest in preserving natural space and supporting smart development on the County Grounds. My wife and I also happen to own and operate a working tree farm in northeast Wisconsin. Sustainable forestry is really a part of our daily lives. I was thinking about something else on the way over tonight that most, you don't even know this. But I have a background in education, public education, and I taught for three and a half years. I did my student teaching in Wauwatosa at a school called Webster School. And I finished my senior year semester early in college, so I, if you can believe this, earned a paid internship for the second semester of my senior year, which I did at Underwood School. Taught first grade.
Paid?
My master's degree is in education, but it's three decades removed. Anyway, a little history about the project. In the 1990s, the Governors Council on Forestry and the Wisconsin DNR Division of Forestry began to explore how best to reach Wisconsin's largest urban population with a more complete awareness of sustainable forestry. Being a tree farmer, if you get north of Highway 10, everybody understands forestry because somebody in the family is a logger or is working at the mill or is somehow connected to the forest products industry. But in this large urban population in southeast Wisconsin, Wisconsin there, the research indicated that there was a substantial number of disconnects between Wisconsin's forest resources and the urban residents here in southeast Wisconsin. Ecological misunderstandings were the highest, but there was also a lack of awareness and appreciation for the social, the cultural and the economic aspects of sustainable forestry. So in the year 2000, there were discussions about a concept. There was a conceptualization of something that looked like a discovery center with interested parties. And then in 2001, 2002 and 2003, the state legislature appropriated funding for planning around this concept in the state budget. There was also master planning for the overall County Grounds location that was conducted because this was situated centrally in this large population center and it represented the best opportunity for public outreach. In 2003, an education needs analysis was completed and the state of Wisconsin purchased the 67 acres that constitute our forest from Milwaukee County, thus preserving that green space and providing a wooded location in this urban setting for the project. It's important to note, my friend Peggy, Senator Rosenzweig is here. She was intimately involved in this back in the day. Interesting to note that, because a condition of the purchase, there was to be some kind of entity associated with this project. And that entity would be charged with the mission of reconnecting those disconnects that I spoke of just a moment ago. Our mission is in fact to explore, explain and experience Wisconsin's forests and forestry. And our vision is to be the preeminent education center that inspires and engages our students and members of the public about the economic, the environmental and cultural importance of Wisconsin's forests. We do this and we plan to do this by presenting a dynamic and very hands-on experience that allows our students and our visitors to develop an understanding of forests, a relationship to them and the role that each of us plays as stewards of our forests and the benefits that they provide. As we, as our project evolved, you know, we explored how this is going to look. And, you know, there was market research conducted, there were interpretive themes studied, there were strategic consultants that joined and left the project. We looked at lots of, of different ways of doing this. And in the end, we decided that there's plenty of nature centers in southeast Wisconsin, so we didn't need a nature center. We didn't need another museum, nor did we need another science center. So we chose a regional charter school concept or model, much in the fashion of High Tech High in San Diego, California, or Centennial Campus Magnet School, Middle School in Raleigh-Durham. Programming for our school would be correlated to state academic standards in science, technology, engineering, math and other curriculum areas. It will also encompass all aspects of sustainable forestry in Wisconsin today, including urban forests, ecological benefits of forests, forest products and the social and cultural importance of forests to our quality of life. Our, our plan is to introduce a range of technical and professional career opportunities, building a future workforce for local employers and encouraging a diversity of students to enter the fields of forestry, math, science, engineering and the arts. When it became apparent that we could not obtain a sufficiently long enough lease to actually site our building on the 67-acre forest that WDNR owns, it was only natural that we looked across the street Swan Boulevard to the Ashweiler Buildings. They were formerly a school and repurposing them for a school was a natural fit and it was less costly than new construction. It also gave us the opportunity to coordinate our efforts with UW-Milwaukee, their School of Engineering and other local neighbors that would allow us a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to locate our school on Innovation Campus in the midst of an academic and science setting, a community of science where people live, work, learn and play. And I don't know, and I don't want to take anything for granted, what the familiarity of the board is with High Tech High or Centennial Campus Magnet Middle School. But High Tech High began as a single charter high school launched by a coalition of San Diego business leaders and educators. It has since evolved over the last decade into a integrated network of schools spanning grades K-12. It houses now a comprehensive teacher certification program and a new innovative graduate school of education. Centennial Campus Magnet Middle School involves a population of students, teachers and parents who frequently engage with the faculty, students and facilities of North Carolina State University as well as its corporate and local governmental partners on Centennial Campus to extend and enhance instructional activities. Why shouldn't we be able to draw upon what others have done in other parts of the United States? They've accomplished a regional economic and educational development link like this in San Diego. They've also accomplished this kind of innovative campus in North Carolina. We actually have far better assets and talent right here in this region. And we ask, why shouldn't we do it as well?
Or I introduce Mary Staton, or I let Mary Staton introduce herself. There's one member that I wanted to point out and that's Phil Ayello, the Development, Senior Development Manager, who's been instrumental in the work about preparing the Ashweiler Buildings to be referred to its original purpose and the overall collaboration with the Innovation Campus. And so, thank Phil for being here as well and his questions that have to do with the development. At the heart of this is a vision for tremendous, powerful, generally beneficial regional school. That's the first. I'm sure you get a chance to hear from our educational experts and our first implementers.
Good evening. Good. Thank you for having us. My name's Mary Staton and I'll tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm interested in this project and want to see it happen. And then mention several of the design principles around the educational program. So I came to the project about a year ago, a little over a year ago now, to help develop the curriculum around the school. My background is as a scientist. I worked for 15 years at Milliparine Company as a research microbiologist. I then moved into teaching high school science at the age of 40, wanting to do a career change. And I'd always worked with students when I worked as a scientist, talking about my work, trying to encourage kids to think about careers in science. So at 40, I changed careers and became a high school science teacher. With Milwaukee Public Schools for 18 years, after teaching as a science teacher, I moved into the position in administrator role as the Science Curriculum Specialist for the district. That, in those roles, teaching science and being, having worked as a scientist, part of my thinking and what I saw and how students learned science, how they were taught science, really informed my decisions and the work I did as a science teacher and science curriculum specialist. So when I heard about this school and the development of this school, knowing that the school was designed around how young adolescents and adolescents learn. We know that they're inquisitive. We know that they're explorers. We know that they're social. They like interacting with adults. They like solving problems. When I saw that the school was taking that focus and really designing it around student interest and how students are as students and how they are as learners, I was on board. So I wanted to be part of the process and I also wanted to see this happen because I think it is going to be the way that students will be successful because it's designed around how students learn. Again, they're interactive. They want to be outside. They want to be doing. And that's how we do science. Part of the work that I've done is to help develop a program that's experiential learning. We want our, our students to be active and effective citizens as well as continuing, wanting to continue their education and being prepared for college. The program itself, it integrates academics and career exploration. It's focused on science, technology, engineering and math, the STEM education as well as environmental education. It's in the context of the forest environment, which I think sets the precedence in learning science in a real-world setting and real-world application. And I think that's going to make the difference. The students will do actual real-world projects, taking that inquiry approach, taking the research approach to learn analytical skills as well as technical skills and how to engage in being effective community members. Because they're there to work with experts in the field to solve problems. Our primary education model will be a blend of teacher and student-led project-based learning. And again, emphasizing STEM. The middle school level, students will focus on literacy in the context of science, technology, engineering and math. And at the high school level, we're going to prepare them for post-secondary preparation and education. If I could just mention some of the design principles, personalization is one. Where student engagement will be fostered by tapping into their experiences and interests and their need as adolescents to have a strong sense of community. Another strength, I think, of the program is the adult world connection. The students will engage in community-based learning by collaborating with adults on meaningful work that extends beyond the walls of the school. And part of knowing how children are at that age, they appreciate working with adults and they appreciate working on community-based problems. Common intellectual mission, all students graduate ready for post-secondary education, work and citizenship. The teacher as the designer. Teachers will work in interdisciplinary teams to develop curriculum and programs for 50 students per team so that we can have that close connection and relationship building. I mentioned project-based learning. In this sense, students will have the knowledge, the skills and the reasoning in order to develop projects. And that's an area we'll emphasize. The project doesn't just happen. You have to have the content knowledge. You have to have the skills and abilities. And you have to be able to reason to do a project. What we mean by project-based learning is that students will design, plan and carry out extended projects and produce publicly exhibited products, publications, installations, presentations. And then there's the exhibition, where students will present their learning, their understanding of a specific concept through forestry or through another theme-based of a specific concept through forestry or through another theme-based concept to the public as evidence of their learning.
Next, I'm going to ask Allison Perry to take my seat, and I may or may not ask her back, depending on how well she does. Allison is the forest educator for the Forest Exploration Center, so during the planning year, while we are working on preparing to open the school, we're also modeling and making outreach to the community. So what she has to tell you about is the way, what she has to tell you about in some senses, in the early stages of the planning team, which at some points, Mrs. Ehrenberger was involved in us, and we were still involved with discussions with the Wauwatosi District, one of the themes that came up in many of the discussions is, how are people going to really understand what this is? And it was Craig Berg, one of the science educators at University of Wisconsin at Waukees, says, "The best thing you can do is produce a model." So this summer, between August 5th and August 10th, we did the Exploring Forest Summer Pilot Program, using, employing the principles of curriculum design development or interaction with experts, and we had a week in the forest in the neighboring Willoughby with twenty-eight middle school students, three student assistants from high school age, where we could model much of what we did, and it culminated with an exhibition. And we invited people to visit pretty much perpetually, and Dr. Earl had a chance to come during one of the days. But I wanted Allison to have a chance to talk about that specific design implementation, the curriculum that we used in it, and how we're following up on that. Allison Perry.
My name is Allison Perry. I am the lead teacher for the university lab school. Excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold. I'm going to give you a brief outline of the summer program goals, outcomes, and the next steps from the Forest, Exploring Forest Summer Pilot Program that occurred from August 5th through the 10th. During the planning process, we developed five essential questions that students answered each day of the program. What is a forest? Why are they important? How do we sustain them? What is the future? And where do we go from here? We developed these questions based on the DNR's K-12 Forestry Education Program, in which students gained understanding of these questions through discussions, hands-on lessons, using professional forestry tools and technology with experts, journal reflections, and science lab investigations. The art explorations happened in the afternoons with environmentally-focused art teachers and the U W Milwaukee Art Department head, Laura Trophi-Prats. Students showed understanding through choosing artifacts each day and developing and revising a personal statement, connecting their forest artifact to the essential question, and developing an urban forest banner design celebrating the benefits of forests. All of their work was displayed after revision at the exhibition celebration on the Saturday after the week to the public and to families. So students were able to stand next to their tables and talk about their work and find that pride in what they were, what they had accomplished in just five days. The summer program was developed in collaboration with the DNR, the K-12 Forestry Education Program, forestry and environmental education experts, and curriculum experts with the Forest Exploration Center to demonstrate the university lab school's methods that reflect our beliefs and values. Some of the ways that we have done this are, what we were trying to demonstrate was the communication with a collaborative and diverse student population for academic growth and success through daily cooperative team-building and meaningful group work with a mission to share their learning and inspire their community through the week-long Urban Forest Banner Project. We had twenty-eight students from ten Milwaukee schools. Danny and I connected with families through phone calls and home visits to almost every family before the program began. Home visits helped me connect with families on a personal level and assisted me in individualizing instruction and preparing for those five days. It also allowed me to work on a pre-assessment with the students, so I could figure out their attitudes about the forests and where to take those five days. Another reason, another one of our values that we really wanted to focus on for the summer program was to model the ability to connect the Common Core state standards with hands-on, project-based, place-based, real-world learning experiences in the forest in collaboration with experts. We developed Days at a Glance to ensure all aspects of the summer curriculum aligned with the standards, as well as the next-generation science standards, environmental education and stewardship strands, social studies, and art academic standards. The importance for students to exhibit their learning publicly and develop a sense of pride over their accomplishments while actively being environmental stewards in the community through the banner project, as well as working together to move fallen trees and logs out of public trails, was a huge accomplishment for the students. I have pictures over here that I can put up as soon as I'm done talking, so that you can see all of the cool things that the kids did. When we provided that opportunity for them to move, to move the logs, really what we did was we said, "I don't know if you can move that log." And they were like, "Yeah, we can," and they all worked together, and they moved the log. They were so excited to run through the trails and clear the trails to make them more accessible for people with special needs and people who might have mobility problems. Thank you. So these sorts of, these sorts of opportunities can lead to other projects that can be developed by bringing in all of those other standards. Another thing we really wanted to accomplish was to cultivate the relationships and collaborations within the community and show our dedication to the belief that teachers should work together to design and implement a curriculum. This program served as a pilot for the Interactive Forestry Badge Program. Badge Program will be used as an assessment tool for the university lab school when it opens. Forest badges are awarded in various forestry-related categories and will be available to not just our students, but to all citizens in Wisconsin. Badges offer out-of-the-classroom opportunities to explore topics, communicate with experts, and share, share their learning, excuse me. And as each student badge earner, student or badge earner, will have their own website, so from the summer program, the students that were involved will eventually, as soon as we continue this process, get their own website where they will be able to have an online resume of all of the things that they've been able to earn through the badge program. Exploring Forest's summer program provided students with an opportunity to earn that first badge, that introductory badge that kind of was, is the key to the badge program. So after the summer program, I made home visits with each family, returning their journals, and gave them a post-assessment. And where I'm going from at this point forward is, we are moving on and helping them earn their next badges. I'm currently in touch with the schools to install the banners. Each student will have a banner displayed in front of their school. We're going to have a celebration so that they can find that pride and show to their peers, their families, the community, how important forests are and the different benefits that forests provide in the city, as well as in rural forests. As the school year progresses, I'll be developing their next badge programs. They each made statements reflecting what they would like to learn more about on the last day. I'm categorizing them currently, and depending on students' availability and interests, we'll be getting together weekly to continue learning the next badge of their choice, a more specific badge, such as animals in the urban forest, or tree identification, invasive species, things like this. As with the summer program, I'll be connecting students with appropriate experts to assist in the badge-earning process, and solely will begin releasing the responsibility of their badge-earning to students and families as they continue the process. And I need to add, families of students will also be able to be involved in these upcoming badge steps, events, and galleries that will showcase how they earned their badge. The summer program was an incredible success. It was wonderful, the students had a wonderful time, and through their post-assessments, they really showed an outstanding amount of learning through this hands-on, project-based, through the forest process. So, thank you.
A couple of things to build on. It was fascinating to listen to the presentation before this, as people are struggling to comprehend proficiency, new models of ways of assessing learning, demonstrating evidence-based assessment. So we have much in common with what Wauwatosi's already doing. Three of the students that were participating are attending Wauwatosi schools now, we're in touch with them. One's in, I think, Wilson Longfellow and Eisenhower, we already have there. And then in the Saturday, the gallery celebration, which was essentially an evidence-based assessment, although we were like the grandparents, we didn't have to give anybody a grade, we just got to play with the kids and then get away and come back later on. But with the ways in which we were approaching this, because we had also a demonstration of how do students learn, how do they show what they learn, what could we do to give real-world credit and credibility for that? It was all to introduce the model of the evidence-based assessment, and also to show how the interaction in this kind of gallery exhibition model, and this is why, one of the reasons why the collaboration with U W M is so important, is to show literally high standards for how you present materials, how you document processes. So that's, all of this was designed to build a relationship with the Wauwatosi School District and with the surrounding region. Where we are, I'm going to ask Tom Ujek to come and speak where we are with regard to the collaboration with U W M, making sure that this, to clarify one point, is that Tom is not a member of the Chartering Authority. He is one step removed from that. Our application is to the Chirring Authority, but the work that we're doing to create this model and implement it is really deeply involved in how we're working with U W M. So this is not.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you here. I'm a former resident of Wauwatosi, and I can tell you, it's a terrific community. And if my wife didn't have a sister who's her best friend living on the other side of town, we'd still be living here. But I am thrilled that I'm back here tonight, speaking on behalf of the administration at U W M about our interest and excitement in this program. I think all of you are familiar with Innovation Campus that is going up as we speak. As I was driving up through the zoo interchange tonight, I saw the lights on in the new ABB Engineering Facility that is being built on the grounds. If you go just a little bit to the east, you would see great progress being made on the first U W M research facility that will be opening next spring. It's an EDA-funded Business Accelerator Building that will be bringing together our scientists and engineers, together with local businesspeople, in pursuit of developing new ways of creating products and services for the area. Down the road, we have very, very exciting plans. Two years from now, we received permission from the state legislature in this last budget cycle to begin planning and designing an eighty-million-dollar, integrated interdisciplinary research complex that will be right in the heart of the research park. It really is going to bring together the best of the research that we have in the region, working closely with the Medical College of Wisconsin, Children's Hospital, the Blood Institute, and all of the other partners out at the regional medical complex. Our faculty are thrilled with the notion that they will be working in the heart of what we believe will be the center of academic research throughout southeastern Wisconsin. Our faculty are also thrilled with the possibility of working together with the city of Wauwatosi, with you folks here involved in educating students in the city of Wauwatosi, and the Forest Exploration Center, because we see such great need, such tremendous need, to fill the pipeline with more students who can take those jobs in the STEM disciplines, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. I can tell you, over the years, U W M has had tremendous success working with school districts, bringing students both for summer and interim programs on our campus facilities. One of the most successful and most exciting that we have is with our new School of Freshwater Science down on the, at our Harbor Campus on Milwaukee's south side. For a number of years, we've had grade school and high school students go out on our research vessel to get their first taste of what aquatic research is like. When we first announced plans to build our research park out here, we received interest from many, many faculty who wanted to either relocate or co-locate their laboratories in the new research facilities that we are putting up. When the FEC approached U W M and expressed an interest in possibly collaborating using the Eschweiler Buildings as a home, we received another round of phone calls and visits from faculty, artists, architects, engineers, biologists, people who saw great, great opportunity for them to begin to plant the seeds of science education among high school and grade school kids in a great facility, in a great community, where we have this wonderful nexus of learning and research and science that are going on. As Danny and my colleagues on the FEC Board mentioned, they have filed an application with the U W M Charter Office requesting authorization to sponsor that school here in the city. I should point out that that decision will be made independently by the Charter Office, although I appear tonight on behalf of the chancellor and the rest of the administration speaking forcefully and excitedly about the potential for this program. A very independent process is going on right now, reviewing the proposal to make sure it is consistent with what U W M requires of any of its charter partners. You may have seen the story last week in the Journal Sentinel, looking at the charter programs that exist in Milwaukee, and U W M was listed, school after school after school, as top performers. We do have a great track record in that area. And so, that process is going forward through the Charter Office. I can tell you, again, on behalf of the administration, we think that the FEC model provides enormous opportunities for us to serve in partnership with the city of Wauwatosi and with the region to provide this terrific pipeline to bring students through their curriculum and through their experiences at the elementary and secondary level, preparing them to become students, we hope, at U W M down the road, taking advantage of this terrific facility that we will have both here in Tosa as well as our main campus. So we look forward to continuing our explorations. We've had great conversations with the superintendent about U W M's commitment to work with the city. Again, we, with twenty-nine thousand students, perhaps some of you are U W M graduates, we have many, many alumni, many current students, and yes, indeed, faculty and staff who are Wauwatosi residents, who look forward to the possibility of this being one wonderful asset that would further connect U W M to the community of Wauwatosi. Thank you very much.
So that pretty much, that concludes the presentation portion of this, and we're welcome questions and comments.
Well, I'm as excited about this concept as I was a year and a half ago, when John G. brought it to us, and he talked about a lot of the same things you did, and it sounds like your summer program kind of is a proof that that concept, you know, can and will So the FEC did come here a year and a half ago and request that the Tosa School District be the chartering authorizer. We had a couple of presentations and some debate and a vote. So what I don't know is how we got from there to here today with U W M as a chartering authorizer, and I don't know what a partnership looks like. We've heard from Dr. Erdl that you want a partnership, you want some, I don't, I don't know what that would look like. We had it all spelled out for us as a planning grant authorizer, and we, you know, went into that in good faith, lots of energy, and so, you know, I'm just being very honest here, because I don't know how we got from there to here. High Tech High, we had a lot of information about that. We had full-color brochures of the forest exploration, new facility that was going to be built on the county grounds, which would not be, of course, an undue burden on the district then for rehabbing or maintaining historic preservation. So I'm real honest, and I'm real, you know, I want to know how we got from there to here. to here.
There's two parts to that answer, and I'm going to ask Dr. Erdl to help me with the part that has to do with the decision-making from the Wauatosa School District side of it. From our perspective, when we, when the, when the separation occurred, we had so much interest, and we'd gone far enough along, that we wanted to continue to develop it to show that laboratory, university collaborative model. There, we, at no point, and still at no point, and I'll ask for Phil Aiello and Tom Gardner to give more detail about this part, there's no financial burden having to do with the facility. It's actually just a less expensive strategy with an additional value built onto it. So I guess, if, how you want to describe the separation, then I will work with you and we will disguise, describe the recuperation. How's that?
Yeah, I think the separation really was a result of some discussions that took place and just kind of, I don't know if it was a disagreement, but with direction and communication and some challenges with that, and I thought it was in our best interest to not be engaged in the process. A lot of things have happened since that time, one being the legislation that allows UWM to authorize charter schools in the five-state, or five-cony region, which I think made some, I mean, we've had discussion here at the board table about that. But I think the exciting part of, part about this is really trying to create something that really hasn't been done before. I think, excuse me, that's kind of how we're going into these discussions, is saying, this is going to be new, it's going to be different. There really isn't a model for governance and of, of something that we're looking at with UWM, the FEC, and a lot of different people involved in it. So it's really, what does that partnership look like? We haven't, we haven't found it yet. We haven't defined that. And I think that's what, through the conversations, that's what we're looking to do. And at some point, hopefully, we'd be able to bring something back to the school board for approval, if we can get to the point where that partnership is, looks like something that's going to benefit everyone.
Can you give an example of what that might look like?
Yeah, there's a couple of ways to describe the examples. I want to stay as close to home as possible, because much of the policies that we have to address are state policies. But the North Carolina State Innovations Centennial Campus is a regional campus. So we have examples of regional magnet schools, and their values are unquestioned. The question now is, what kinds of governance structures can we achieve? The advantage, and this is acknowledged universally, is that the policy is ours to define and implement and work with DPI to get approvals for.
When you say ours, you're saying this, the university lab school?
The university lab school and the Wauatosa School District working together. The governance model is ours to define and discover. So we can't tell you because we have to create it. That, to me, is a great advantage. Frankly, so much of what we're telling the students, particularly when you start with middle school onward, is be prepared to innovate, be prepared for a world that is changing. I see this as a marvelous opportunity to actually behave as we would hope our children will behave as we go forward, creating something of general benefit that respects the structures that are there, but also makes it possible for us to do things that we haven't otherwise been able to do. So what we're looking forward is literally a new kind of charter school in this region that can be incubated and launched with UWM and then be brought to its full value through agreements with Wauatosa School District, where we are there defining the values and how we build them. We use the word laboratory, there's essentially four ways in which we see this as bringing benefits that we then work out through agreements. One is with regard to the curriculum and the professional development associated with it, so that we really do have a rich dialogue with education professionals about how to do this kind of education, evidence-based outcomes, interaction with experts, interdisciplinary, that the projects that we create, we can share and work with, so that we're working with Wauatosa professionals in that area. The forest exploration, I think Allison did a pretty good job of exploring how we've already started with it, but it's a remarkable site. One of the sort of catchphrases we use is learning about life by learning about forestry. So it's the, the site of the forest itself, already with DNR support, is being, there's an interpretive plan that's creating it as essentially an educational site. Our students, our community will be involved in realizing the value of that and continuing that stewardship. So we can work and look at that. That's not only for students who enroll in a university laboratory school, it's for students throughout the region. And the way we've structured our day, it's tricky, because once again, after-school doesn't mean the same thing in this context. Even homework doesn't necessarily mean the same things in this context. But in concrete terms, between the hours of approximately 3:30 and 6:00 every day, every school day, there will be students from other places working with our teachers, teachers from other places working with our teachers, and our students collaborating on various kinds of activities. And because we instituted a BAD system, which can be aligned with benchmarks, they can get a credit and they can demonstrate their proficiencies there as well. So we see that as an enormous benefit as well. The arts work that we're doing, which is so much based on the presentation of evidence and the display of evidence, so that it's both aesthetically excellent, which is where you get to the standards around communications, et cetera, but it also invites the student, invites the community into the dialogue. That arts exploration, which gives way to creative activity and is the ramping up, all the research shows about brain-based research and STEM research, that's how you ramp into the STEM and career explorations. That's another area where we think we have rich opportunities to collaborate. And I'm going to check my notes for number four, the, the final one, and this is something that Tom has been discussing so eloquently. There's a medical college, there's an engineering campus, there's ABB, there's experts that are already excited about this environment, and we think cultivating that together is another way. So we have to discover the agreements. What we are certain about is this is a confluence of opportunities and resources. It's not just that there's nothing like this in the state, there's nothing like this in the world. This is really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and that's what we think parents will be excited about. We're certain that students will be excited about it. Just at the gallery presentation, which was in the Willoway Shelter, no, it was as low-tech as you could get, insofar as we didn't have access to any technologies, we used fishing lines and fish hooks and clothespins and binder clips to suspend the process documentation so that people could see it. And then we put the work out for people to see. The reason I'm stressing that is it is a very important part of this, is the technology. And, but when you bring field experts in, the key is the human interaction. That's what we think would be, it is absolutely central to our success, is that a school district be with us in this work. That's why we came here first. Many things have changed, but we're coming back now, having a year of experience, a lot of proof of concepts, a lot of development, and we're looking to now for essentially the go-ahead to continue exploring the parts of this that have to become concrete, so that there's a mutual and sustainable benefit to the Wauatosa School District.
Thank you, that helps. Do you have an idea of a timeline? And I know there's finance issues, I know this TIF is a big issue.
I spent four years on the Milwaukee Public School Board, so I, I know what it's like to want a timeline.
And I don't know, I don't need a timeline, I'm just wondering when we could expect you to come back with.
These are the things that we know. We know that we will be, our review from the Wauatosa, from, for the UWM chartering authority will, will occur early October is when they will give us a, a decision, and there's a possibility, probably a likelihood, that there'll be dialogues around that, because they will also want to know about the state of the facility. We know that we have to create the, make sure that the admin building is ready for 150 students. So that, getting to work on that is, is it. We're intending to open with 150 students as a UWM charter in August slash September, because we do do summer orientations, it's also how we engage our parents and the community. That's our, that's, that's, that's what we have promised and put into our charter application. The faster we can go to gain the approvals and the understandings of the governance model that involves Wauatosa School District and establishes the values that we need to establish, the better it is. Because the faster we do that, the faster we get to being able to really realize the laboratory portion of our mission.
Yeah, and what is it that you need from the district right now?
Right now, right now, it's goodwill and a, and a chance to continue building the trust that we have been developing over the last couple of months through the dialogues. And then the opportunity to make regular reports and updates, because the communication is really difficult. I don't know whether you've ever encountered a moment as your school board deliberations, where you've struggled with how do we communicate effectively with all the different stakeholders? And especially when sometimes you can communicate effectively, but people hear different things. Sometimes that happens. So we want to be able to be part of a regular dialogue, we don't want to wear you out, we don't want to keep you too late, but we want to make sure that as we hit milestones and we hit successes and we need inputs and feedbacks, and working with Dr. Erdl and his administration, that we can bring him to the, up to speed in a much more consistent fashion than has been happening since the separation occurred.
Thank you. Is there any other board question?
I have questions.
Ms. Rios?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. So, we in Wauatosa have a STEM charter school, we have STEM curriculum at the middle school, we have Project Lead the Way courses at the high school, it's, it's one of our, you know, focus points as well. And I think everything that you're explaining about the project-based learning, using forest as kind of yours focus to go from is good, and I support it, and I think it's wonderful. I, my, my, now I'm going to say what Mary Jo said, I speak honestly. My feeling is that these ideas are great, and then we should learn from them and implement them across all our schools, so that all our students are going to UWM in science, you know, and doing that. So my mind goes to how do all of the students in the school district benefit from this? Not simply the ones who, you know, will choose to maybe go there, who have parents who are aware of this. My question comes from an equity across all students. And what is this going to do for all of our students in the district? Because that's who I'm looking out for.
I can speak to it from our perspective, our vision, and that's something that will only be realizable through the collaboration with the school district. So on the equity side of things, I want to make sure that, one of the reasons we chose this particular model, the high-tech high model, is it's based on its first and fundamental precept, is you have to have diverse students and parents involved in this, diverse families. We've spelled this out in the proposal, is that we're expecting it will be about 50% free and reduced lunch, and the various sub-grouping will be reflect the extraordinary diversity of the five-to-10-mile radius around the site itself. So what, that's the first, that's, that's inside the school. Secondly, the way we are crafting our outreach is that we are giving the students who have had the benefit of the interaction with Allison, the experts in the program, are reaching out to their schools, to their other, so we're crafting that outreach. This is also how we would expect to model it, to create one pathway of opportunity for all of the Wauatosa schools to be involved. Secondly, the after-school, for lack of a better term, I mean, school, we will have a moment at which schools, I mean, I'm not saying that schools is endless, but our, our school day ends at 3:30. Our activities go forward from 3:30 to 6:00 every day. Our staffing patterns are so designed that we will have our staff on hand, working to make sure that the students inside the schools, some, some, some of them are available 3:30 to 6:00, because that's how they're realizing the objectives that they've laid out. That's where the collaboration says, how can we reach the other students? How can we get them there? Nothing prevents us from saying, today at 3:30, we're going to go to the forest, and then we're going to go to name the school, to Wilson, to Eisenhower. When we know more about what's already developing and growing in the Tosa schools, then we know more about how to forge the collaboration. The STEM is a curriculum, Project Lead the Way is a curriculum. I founded a school that it makes, makes great use of that, and I, I know why that's good. What we want to do is say, okay, let's create multiple ways of applying the knowledge that Project Lead the Way generates. Let's give students ideas about Project Lead the Way structured products, projects that can lend themselves. Project Lead the Way curriculum can build an information kiosk on the county forest grounds. Project Lead the Way curriculum can take a tree that has been cut because, because of necessities of effective silviculture and make wood products out of it. That's not strictly the domain of the university laboratory school, that's the vision of the Forest Exploration Center. For us to be successful both ways, we have to work with other schools. So how we get to the schools that are not this school is, is one of the things that we get to work on together, and it is, it is consistent with our mission.
And if I could add, from UWM's standpoint, we've told Superintendent Erdl, we're very interested in doing exactly, I think, what you're asking about. How do we go ahead and connect this? So it, the, while the, while the FEC program may be the nucleus or the starting off point for this partnership, we have enormous interest on the part of our faculty, not just in the STEM area, but in the school of education, for example, that is very, very interested in building on this partnership. This is our western campus, it is a very, very critical part of UWM's future growth. And our commitment to, to you folks here and the superintendent are, as we develop this relationship, look for ways in how we can help serve the people of Wauatosa. We view ourselves and our role or our presence in, in Wauatosa as a very, very important aspect of UWM's identity, future identity. And so we want to be partners here, not coming in and telling you what we think you should do or what we think you need, but rather, in a true collaborative spirit, look for ways in which we can create a wonderful asset that will serve the students in Wauatosa, meet your needs as leaders of your educational facilities here, and also advance UWM's mission of taking forward our, our goal of serving the region in a fashion that ultimately ends up providing more educated students that will make this truly a, a source for economic development here in Wisconsin, not just in the region, but in the state. We truly believe that there are just are so many wonderful opportunities to work together with you folks.
Thank you. Is there any other board question, Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. I'll preface my comments by saying I grew up in the state of Oregon, and we all have a forest regime just embedded in us, so I'm kind of receptive to the concept to begin with. But I do have a question, I'm not quite clear, not on the separation, but on the role of the FEC and the, the lab school. So originally, there were some plans for development within the state forest itself. I'm just wondering, what are the development plans for trails and things within the state forest by the FEC at this point?
Sure, can I answer that? Thanks. Phil, we've, we've been working with DNR as we speak on development of a trail system that will tie into the trail system that's on the county grounds, which will ultimately tie into the Akeren State Park Trail that takes you all the way down to the, from the headwaters down back towards downtown. So that, that process is, is actually done right now. What was the other question?
That was it, basically.
That was it, okay.
That was a better answer than I was hoping for. That's good. So I, I remember some of the earlier plans were to get the public into the forest, so I was hoping that was still part of the plan. As part of that, is there, as far as cooperating with Wauatosa students, is there a plan to have outdoor laboratories in that area, so that we, as part of our use, you would have outdoor classes maybe with Wauatosa, that sort of thing?
Yes, outdoor laboratories, but essentially indoor-outdoor laboratories. One of the things we're saying about this, what we're saying to parents and students who are, who will consider enrollment in our school, is there's no such thing as bad weather, there's just bad clothing choices.
That's what we say in Oregon all the time.
Yeah, but of course in Oregon, they don't see 16 feet of snow, when we may have to retrench slightly in our messaging. But the, proof of that is, I will tell you, in my basement now, there are 96 semi-disposable rain, what are they called?
Pancho's.
Pancho's, rain pancho's, because we didn't know whether it was going to rain that five days, we wanted to be ready. So our first gesture is to you, you need a pancho, I'm the guy to see. But the, the, the actual talking about outdoor and indoor laboratories is, we will have what's called a fab lab indoors that will be accessible not only to our students, but to others as well. And then when we use, uh, outdoor- And then when we use outdoor laboratory experiences, it will be planned and structured so that we know that we can both do the laboratory, the experimental work outdoors, but there's also a place where you can come back in and gather yourself. And then what we will be commissioning our students to be doing is we need to start hosting some outdoor laboratory community experiences. What shall we do? I want to be clear, when we ask the students, "What shall we do?", it doesn't mean that they get the final say. It means that we listen to them, we input and we take their inputs into it and then the adults actually make the decisions. And then we check back with the students to see, "Do you feel like your input was honored?" And the reason why I think that's so important is that's how we get forest stewards from, at a young age. So, we're inviting a community of people to see some projects that you've done and to go into the forest and work with you on some actual citizen science. So, how they interact with you, students, is gonna be as much a part of their experience as how they act in the forest. How do we make sure we're doing that well? Those kinds of questions. This is what we mean by stewardship. So, the concept of environmental and historical stewardship, because of the Eschweiler's historic building, is connected up with how we do citizen science and outdoor site-based community outreach. Does that answer your question?
My other question has to do with student interest. So, we had a trade charter school at Wawa Tosah for a few years and it seemed like the perfect idea, but we might not have done as well as we could with making sure that we had the interest in the school or even develop it while the school was in. So, given that you're in a most urban environment, how... What have you done to gauge student and family interest in this to know that you'll be able to sustain this school with the number of students that you want to start with?
Well, we had 100 adults come to the gallery exhibition to see the work, not all family members and hundreds. We also are... Have commissioned the Community Parent Outreach Group. So, we're not claiming that every student and every family will want to choose this school, but we are being very clear about what the expectations are and why they would be, if they have a particular set of interests, they would like this school. So, essentially, in the pre-assessment that Allison Perry did was one of the ways of gauging whether they were interested in this. Sometimes parents say, "My son Danny's really interested in this." Because the parent thinks Danny ought to be interested in this. Then you meet Danny and he's going, "I ain't studying forests." And then we have to navigate that potential difference between a sixth grader and his parents who want the best for him. That's really part of this new method of assessment. So, we not only find out in terms of skills and content expertise where the students are when we meet them, we're also finding out what kind of questions are they asking about the world? What are their interests? That way, we have a way of saying, "If you don't want to do this, you won't get the full benefit." And then a parent may say, "Oh, he's gonna want it." And then we work from there because it may turn out that parent... You see, there's a dynamic there, but we actually modeled that dynamic. Needless to say, we recruited students for the summer program by doing email blast out to the neighborhood centers in Wawa Tosah and then by developing relationships that I have with schools in the Milwaukee area. So, it was something of a self-selecting group. But we did hit the, "I don't know nothing about forests, but I know that I ain't getting up that early in the morning," morphing into, "Okay." And then at the end, they had a chance to say, "What was that experience like? I'm glad I did it, I want to do it again." Or, "Don't ever wake me up again at that early in the morning." But this is a process where very much, the model that tells the teachers that they're the curriculum designers and they are, and their passion, "Teach your passion" is one of the other key parts of it. That makes, and this is something that Dr. Stanton talked about, kids respond to them. Then they have to really understand as best they can going in what's going to be expected of them. And then you keep checking in, reinforce it daily, sometimes hourly. And then gearing up for the exhibition when they know they're gonna be presented gets the rigor involved. Because even if they don't love this, they want to do the best job they possibly can when it's time for them to show their work. What we ask of the parents is, "Celebrate with us along the way." Not just finished products, celebrate along the way.
All right, thank you.
Allison, maybe you could share some examples of what some of the kids said after the exhibition? One of the things Allison did was to talk about forestry in an urban setting. So, she explained that that forest is in your backyard. And after several, I talked to several of the kids at the Rollaway Exhibition afterwards and there was comments like, "Why can't schools be like this all the time?" And my school did this kind of work. So, I think part of using those children, having those children be ambassadors too, and these were kids from the central city of Milwaukee, talk to other children in their classes and at their schools. Outreach also. And I intentionally went to talk to the kids to see what they thought and what they learned from that week long.
One thing to say is, when Dr. Stanton did that, they did not know who she was. She hadn't been there during the... She wasn't one of the experts. She was absolutely seminal to design, but she wasn't one of the people that the students knew or saw. So, there was an additional value, who is this woman? And she knows her stuff, it's not like she doesn't... But the point I'm trying to make is, that interaction with a well-intentioned stranger who's interested in them has extraordinary educational value. Once the students learn that that's coming, it creates extraordinarily high standards of behavior and conditions. That's why we went out to see High Tech High, because it's happening there. Their students, they're like our students. They are disposed to believing that the next thing that could happen is gonna be good and that the adults are coming with a certain set of expectations and that they have to model the expectations as well. It has enormous powerful benefits as far as the character development and what we would call the management of students. This is one of the things I think we demonstrated quite remarkably. And the teachers did invite each other.
Is there any other board question? Mrs. Randall?
Just on the money piece. Everything I read says that FEC has to raise money for the restoration, renovation of the administration building. And the reporting is that the TIF that's been requested is the... Is absolutely necessary for the funding to go forward. So, I just want to ask one more time. You said there would be no financial burden or responsibility by the school district in this partnership? That's one question. And the other question is, if you can't raise the money for the renovation, do you have a Plan B for a site?
Let me take a stab at this for you, Mary Jo. The anticipated approval of the TIF supports underground parking in the residential development for Mandel Group. And that creates the financial capacity for the developer, Mandel Group, to implement what they have termed Plan A or Plan B. Plan A is, we now, this TIF, which, you know, I'd love to get the $2.5 million. Unfortunately, it goes to Mandel Group to support underground parking. What it does is it allows the developer to move forward and advance his development, which in effect, the collateral effect of that is it buys us time, okay? And that allows us to, that extra time allows us to proceed with a capital campaign. Capital campaign plus low-interest loans plus historic tax, state and federal tax credits, a number of other things that are on our plate. But it buys us much-needed time to advance our project. If Plan A succeeds, we get our deal off the ground. It's a year from when Mandel breaks ground, all right? And then we can move forward with Phase 1 of our project, which is the renovation of the admin building and outfitting it completely for a school, stabilizing the other three Eschweiler buildings. Stabilizing them means roof, exterior windows. By all outward appearances, they look done. The only part that's not done is the interior of those three buildings. So, Phase 1 is Plan A. If we can't raise enough capital by a combination of philanthropy, state and federal, sale of state and federal historic tax credits, all of which we're working on right now as we speak, low-interest loans, I'm meeting Thursday to interview buyer's rep to help rope this all together. If we can't raise enough capital within the year following Mandel's breaking ground, then Plan B would be for the one building to be demolished completely and the other two buildings reduced to English walled gardens. I'd like to see Plan B for a lot of reasons, or Plan A for a lot of reasons, but Plan B is the fallback plan.
And so, your site then would be a new construction?
The alternative site for the University Laboratory School? Quite likely that this will be a question that we address with the authorizer. We are looking for those contingencies and those alternities. And how we make the decision about if we have to open a temporary site will obviously be connected to how long it is before we move into the admin building. So, we have kind of the decision tree. There's no question, we're already looking at various possible places where we can hang our shingle, start cooking. Allison Perry wants to start working with the kids.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Chuck.
Did that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, is there any other board question, discussion? I do have a few. Very excited about this proposal. Can you first answer, how detailed is your description to the UWM Chartering Authority?
Right.
Is it detailed?
It's very... You're welcome to see.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll send the copy to your office. The serious and quick answer is, there's 10 components that we have to spell out in detail. And they range from deep questions about the educational plan, about the support system, about the governance model, about the community outreach, about the marketing, about the business plan, about the facility, about staffing. We have a very detailed description that's available. And it's... So, I will get it to first thing in the morning. So, it's there for you to go in as deeply as you want with my contact information with Dr. Erdl has. So, if you have any specific kinds of questions about it, we're there to answer. What we tried to do was make sure that we balanced the vision that we were hoping to realize with what we had already been able to demonstrate through research. So, there's lots and lots of research base to it and also what our experience had been thus far. So, that integrated into the overall detail is, what school are we hoping to build? What research justifies us going forward with this? And what do we already know based on our own experience? And so, that categorizes the level of detail.
Well, thank you, I think that would be helpful. I mean, your presentation was extremely helpful to me. And, but seeing some of...
Would you like to sit on the UWM authorizing board just for a few weeks?
Seeing a description, you know, I mean, it would, I think it would help me also to frame some ideas that I might have for a partnership. The second, I guess the second thing is that I have received a lot of community interest personally. And I know that in Wawa Tosah where there's a will, there is a way. And our Hoyt Park Pool initiative was certainly something that had progressed over some period of time and that was, you know, doable. So, I would like to see the Wawa Tosah School District partner in some way. I think we're most likely talking about a public-public type partnership. I mean, Wawa Tosah can bring to you experience already in STEM education, K-12, which I think is huge, huge benefit and a key contributor. So, not only, you know, working on some of the after-normal school hours or summer school programming, but how can we assist you in K-12? And we have a huge interest at the elementary level in our STEM program. I mean, we have more kids than we can serve in that program that are interested. So, how can we work together in that manner? I'm excited, you know, certainly I hope we can move forward more quickly to define something because, I mean, the kids, they're looking forward to it. You know, new ways of personalized learning, project-based learning, I think it's important. And I'm sure where there's a will, there's a way. We can work this out. So, you know, I would encourage us to think creatively quickly versus not as it seems that you have a quick, you know, that we would like to have a quick timeline on it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from the board? Then I will accept a community comment at this time. Okay, well, thank you very much again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
In here, there's a full schedule of what we did this week. But this is the way we structure our curriculum mapping and our...
Okay, thank you.
Then what you'll see from the sort of role in this, if you took our letters and community partnership letter, the outline, the map to the UWM. So, if there's questions that come up that don't, that aren't there, just please contact us.
Okay, thank you. And just for board and community information, Mr. Goldberg handed me a packet of some information that we will make sure that all board members have access to. So, seeing a few community members left in the audience, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? And seeing none, may I ask for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner and Mrs. Randall seconded. May we have a roll call?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Miofil?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
And we are adjourned, thank you.